Couldn't get any greener. Have a look at this fish tank in the third grade classroom. The bluegill fish, now under the watchful eyes of students, are part of the Maryland Department of Natural Resources' Sunfish and Students Program. Now in its fourth year and found in ninety Prince George's schools. The goal is to teach students aquarium maintenance, animal husbandry, and most important, ways to keep the fish alive.
So what's gonna happen if it's too cold?
It's gonna die.
They might die. What's gonna happen if it's way too hot?
It'll die.
So what will happen if it's way too good?
They will stay alive.
They will stay alive. Good job.
With their fishy facts displayed in diagrams and drawings in student journals, often in Spanish, the bluegill that are destined for release into local waterways in the spring can rest assured they are in very capable hands.
It turned blue, and blue means like a seven point six goal, a seven point six range. And that's, and that water's good enough because it's supposed to be six point five to eight point five.
So it falls in that range, doesn't it?
Yes.
So attached do the students get to their scaly charges that for many youngsters, the fish become family.
In some instances, students begin to name the fish. And we know that there's going to be some fish law. So there are some times when students are really a little sad. They're a little downtrodden because maybe one or two fish have expired. And there's a couple of schools that have even had formal ceremonies to undertake their fish. They have planted them back into the earth, into their gardens in their school buildings.
With luck, the surviving bluegill will make their way into cleaner streams, thanks to the restoration efforts of Capital High students. And maybe, just maybe, one of them, likely with no name, could end up on a young angler's book. How many of you go fishing? Have any of you ever gone fishing?
Yeah.
I didn't keep them.
Yeah, sometimes.
At a family reunion.
Ah, what did you catch?
Um, I think it, I think it was just a regular old fish.
A regular old fish. For TV 96, this is Dave Zir.
That is what taking care of the environment looks like in Prince George's County public schools. Now, I must admit, I do remember as a kid that we had fish tanks in our college, in our, in our classroom. But I certainly don't remember learning about animal husbandry. That was, this is way deeper. The kind of intellectual stimulation that we're giving our students in this work is truly commendable. So thank you for that. And with that, we'll move on to the report of the chair. I begin my remarks today, as I often do, by honoring the memory of ones who we have loved and lost. There are seven that I want to call attention to. And I am quite sure that there are others that while we go through this, that we ask you to keep in your heart and in your mind as we take a moment of silence. So let me talk about offering a moment of silence to these loved ones. Ms. Serenity Turner Tate, a student at Panorama Elementary School. Mr. Michael Deal, employee with Print Services here at the Sasser Administration Building. Ms. Teresa Joan Onuquabiri, beloved wife of Andrew Onuquabiri, supervisor of Capital Programs. Mrs. Dorothy J. Pointer, beloved grandmother of Amber Tate, Board Administrative Assistant. Mr. Troy Anderson, teacher at Beacon Heights Elementary School. Mr. Delvin K. Dorsey, automotive mechanic at Friendly Garage. Ms. Judy Hanson, teacher at Laurel Elementary School. Please join me in a moment of silence for these phenomenal souls who will be missed but not forgotten. Thank you all for that. Let me offer some well-deserved accolades to several colleagues. It's been a while. I know we got snowed out. I can't, I'm really sorry about that last board meeting. I know some of you were deeply disappointed that you weren't able to come for us for Sasser Administration Building for a board meeting. But we're gonna make sure that we take care of all of our business, including giving people the accolades that they deserved. Over the winter, several of us were able to join in celebrating our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Kevin Maxwell, who surpassed his fortieth year of service in public education. Dr. Maxwell began his career again forty years ago as a teacher at Crossland High School, where he served for more than two decades before moving to Buck Lodge Middle School and Northwestern High School, took a hiatus to a couple of other districts before coming back home. Throughout his career, Dr. Maxwell has focused on raising student achievement, increasing student participation, and rigorous coursework, engaging state, local, and county stakeholders. And it is his love for this district and his commitment to public education, not only, as I've said to him before, for our students here at Prince George's County, but for our students all around this country. And so I would like to take this moment, and we as a board would like to take this moment, to present Dr. Maxwell with an award of recognition for your forty years of tremendous service. Let's give him a round of applause, absolutely. Let's give him a round of applause. Sir, it reads first with a quote, "Every calling is great when greatly pursued" by Oliver Wendell Holmes. Award of recognition offered honoring Mr. Dr. Kevin M. Maxwell for forty years of dedication to providing high-quality instruction and ensuring student achievement in public education as a teacher, principal, superintendent, and chief executive officer. Presented, supposed to be presented this day, January 4th, slightly delayed, on behalf of the Prince George's County Board of Education. We're absolutely gonna take a picture. But since we have a second one coming, we'll hold off to the pictures until we'll do them both at the same time. Now, we don't have a plaque for this next young lady, but we know it's coming because she hasn't won this award yet, but she will. And we want to take this moment to recognize our board colleague, Ms. Lupi Quinteros Grady. Yes, pay attention, we're rewarding you. Who was recently nominated by the Maryland Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for the Outstanding Professional of the Year Award. Ms. Quinteros Grady has dedicated over twenty years of her career to youth development and advancement, and today continues her advocacy work on the Board of Education. Congratulations, Ms. Grady, on the nomination. Well deserved. And we look forward to being there when they actually present you with this prestigious award. Congratulations. Let's keep this roll of great work going. There are a few of our board members, too, who want to tell you about some outstanding work that has been done recently. And, and, and a third who wants to give some recognition to some great work that's been done all around this county. But let me start by offering a point of personal privilege to Ms. Rahila Ahmed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, one of the charges of the Board of Education is to increase the parental and community engagement in PGCPs. So on January 27th, I held a successful parent leader convening for PTO and PTA officers in District Five. So we had about two dozen leaders and partners that were brought together to share practices and resources to ensure strong school communities in the district. I just want to thank the folks that came together for that convening and express my excitement and inspiration to take action on the conversations that began there.
Thank you for that great work, Ms. Ahmed. And as many of our folks do across the districts and in places like our own Parent and Community Advisory Council in that engagement. Thank you very much. I'd like to extend a point of privilege to Ms. Carolyn Boston.
Thank you. In partnership with the Prince George's County Fire and EMS Department, on January the 20th, 2018, Mrs. Williams and I collaborated to host an open house of the Prince George's County Fire and EMS Cadet Program at Charles Herbert Flowers High School and Gwynne Park High School. This event was held at Flowers High School. While over sixty families were exposed to this dynamic program, participants were able to hear from program instructors, alumni, and students currently participating in the program, and experience the training that goes into saving lives through a live safety drill presentation. All in attendance agree with Mrs. Williams and I that this program is one of Prince George's County Public Schools' best-kept secrets. Many were thrilled to learn that graduating student cadets could earn over forty thousand dollars a year with benefits when they joined the Prince George's County Fire and EMS program, I mean, department. We are committed to being part of spreading the good news about what is going on in our school system to prepare students to be college and career-ready. Special thanks to our sponsors, the College and Career Readiness Department, Patient First, the Coalition of Public Safety Training in Schools, Linnell Driving School, and the Bowie Volunteer Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston and Ms. Williams for that tremendous work. Dr. Maxwell and I had the pleasure of attending that. And let me say, please do, if you haven't, put, there was, they showed a video of what these cadets do. It was amazing. They, they train these high school cadets like actual firemen and EMS. They do all the same stuff. They put out fires. They, they, they do rescue operations. It was amazing. It was amazing video, video to watch. So we're gonna make sure we get that posted and you can see that amazing work. And now I'd like to extend a point of personal privilege to Mr. K. Alexander Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I should have prepared some remarks like my colleagues did, but I'm gonna speak from the heart. Once a Puma, always a Puma. And I have tremendous educational facilities in District Seven. But I have an open bias to Dr. Henry A. Wise Jr. High School. It's been almost a decade since I've been there. I know, time flies. And I was never athletically capable of playing football. So I settled for baseball. But in any event, I always want to recognize the success of any school in District Seven. And I want to present this proclamation on behalf of the board to my alma mater, Dr. Henry A. Wise Jr. High School and the varsity football team for their historic feat over the last couple of seasons, to the principal, the athletic director, the coaching staff, and the student athletes. And it reads, "Prince George's County Public Schools presented to Dr. Henry A. Wise Jr. High School's varsity football team. In recognition of the Puma's third consecutive Maryland 4A state title win, under superb leadership, the Pumas were able to demonstrate good sportsmanship while dominating their category and maintaining an undefeated record en route to winning a third straight state championship title. This plaque is presented with the utmost distinction to the football team, coaching staff, and school administration for their tireless efforts, support, and determination to succeed. Presented on this first day of February 2018, my name, K. Alexander Wallace, District Seven representative, and my colleagues on the Prince George's County Board of Education. Will everyone in attendance please join me in standing ovation for these outstanding student athletes."
Now, these talented young men are here to join us.
A few of them, I see the principal, athletic director, I think the coaching staff is here. We've got some students. They already ate the pizza that I bought, so I think they're good.
Gentlemen, everyone from Wise, from Henry A. Wise Jr. High School.
Dr. Henry A. Wise.
Dr. Henry, I forgot the doctor. Dr. Henry A. Wise, please come on up. Let's take a photo opportunity with you. Now, these talented young men are here to join us.
A few of them, I see the principal, athletic director, I think the coaching staff is here. We've got some students. They already ate the pizza that I bought, so I think they're good.
Gentlemen, everyone from Wise, from Henry A. Wise Jr. High School.
Dr. Henry A. Wise.
Dr. Henry, I forgot the doctor. Dr. Henry A. Wise, please come on up. Let's take a photo opportunity with you. All right, that was wonderful. Let me first say, folks, as we settle back in, we lost the left half of our crowd here. I'm sure they'll be back. So we love that. Our schools accomplish so many great things that we could do recognitions like this at, at every meeting, all the time. And trust me, now that K. Alexander has broken the ice, I know Sonya Williams is already making notes about schools in District Nine and, and District Six. And so we will continue to do that. And I can only guarantee you that any other school in any other district that wins three consecutive state championships can come on, can come on down. And let's, let's hope that we have many more of those to come. Couple of the quick announcements before I wrap things up. First, from a technical perspective, the, the, the crowd joining us on television, we are having technical difficulties. As I understand it, if you are attempting to watch us on television, you can hear us, but you cannot see us. I'm guessing that, first, that that's an improvement, right? But second, just to note that, that we are successfully recording this meeting. So even if we are not able to broadcast it live, it will be, it will be recorded and rebroadcast. Couple of other quick announcements. To date, the board has held two budget work sessions and public hearings in the community to review and get input on the CEO's FY19 proposed operating budget. Highlights of that, of that presentation and discussion include the budget process and timeline, budget analysis, board priorities around, and the systems priorities around academic excellence, high-performing workforce, safe and supportive environments, and looking at estimated revenue, just to name a few. We had a great time two weeks ago, a week, last week at Laurel. We were at Central on Tuesday. And on February 6th, 2018, we will be at Oxon Hill at 5:00 PM for the work session and 7:00 PM for the public hearing. Please do spread the word and have the community come out. It's only through engagement and listening to staff, parents, community members, and stakeholders that we ensure a budget that works for all of our students. Also want to point out that the board, in collaboration with the Panasonic Foundation, will host a retreat on this Friday, February 2nd, and Saturday, February 3rd, down at National Harbor. Our objectives are to align some of the key messages from the Board of Education in District about Prince George's County and why more parents and community members need to choose and get engaged in our school system to develop a common understanding of the current status of our budget and delve, delve more deeply into that budget process, as I just talked about, to learn more about the, our new initiatives on community schools options and, and how they engage with the great work around transforming neighborhoods initiatives that the county has already been engaged in. So this retreat is happening this week. We have a couple of our colleagues, or a few of our colleagues, from the Panasonic Foundation. There's a colleague from Panasonic Foundation. If you're here, could you stand for us? Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. In 2013, the Panasonic Foundation kind of reached out to us. Panasonic Foundation does work with about a dozen districts around the country, focused explicitly on how districts can, can develop laser focus on issues of student equity. They often remind us and tell us that all means all. So when we say all of our students need to achieve at high levels, they spend time with us in the board and with the administration, really helping us both to be better organized, to be more efficient, but most significantly, to laser focus on the things that matter most. And they've been just an incredibly valuable asset to us. They, we've been blessed to have them continue with us. They, they join us and support us through an endowment that they have. Most districts who get this work pay for it. And I can tell you that they have literally given us millions of dollars in valuable consulting for absolutely zero-dollar price. And so thank you, Panasonic Foundation, for your continued support and commitment. And anything else to talk about? Upcoming meetings. I talked about the budget work session. Our next board meeting is on February 22nd at 7:05 here at, at the Sasser Administration Building. Persons interested in speaking at the meeting of the board, please register with the Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-952-6115. That concludes my chair's report. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for the Chief Executive Officer's report.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks, members of the board. On Tuesday, my leadership team and I attended the Maryland State Board of Education meeting to provide an overview and answer questions related to our action plan in response to the state's audit of high school graduation rates. We shared information about our plans to ensure academic integrity in our grading and graduation certification process, including stricter controls over access to student records, new credit recovery programs, mandatory training for all grade and transcript managers, and more time for professional school counselors to certify student records. We are also looking at, at new technology to improve the graduation certification process. And we'll work with an independent auditor who will review our graduation data and processes. Our goal is for all students to graduate, prepare for college and careers, and are committed to ensuring the integrity of our high school diplomas. For the latest information, you can visit our website If you're interested in enrolling in one of our many specialty programs, now is the time to do so. We offer a wide variety to choose from, including language immersion, creative and performing arts, dual enrollment, Montessori, and talented and gifted programs. The deadline to apply for most of our specialty programs is March 12th. For details, you may visit our website. Today, board member Sonya Williams and I joined Congressman Steny Hoyer at Gwynne Park High School to honor four students who were among the top five winners of the Fourth Annual Fifth Congressional District App Challenge. They were in our IT Academy, part of our career, our Career Academies program. And I'm gonna just say that one more time. Four of the top five winners in the Congressional District Five were at Gwynne Park High School. Congratulations to first place winner, Ian Barnes, and second place winner, Destiny Brown. Shawn Mason was named fourth place winner, and Darius Green, who are in fifth place. Congratulations to all of them and to Gwynne Park High School for having eighty percent of the winners of the Congressional District App Challenge. You may add one thing. I'll seed a moment or two.
Because in District Nine, we rock.
Every day.
So as a reminder to everyone, parents, students, employees, anyone that's interested, February, the February 9th Professional Development Day that's on the calendar that was published will now be used as our third inclement weather makeup day. Schools will be open for students and teachers and will follow a B-Day schedule on both February 8th and February 9th. Prince George's County Public Schools developed a school calendar to meet Governor Hogan's requirements for students to have a school year beginning after Labor Day and ending by June 15th. So far this school year, Prince George's County Public Schools has closed schools due to unsafe weather conditions on January 4, 5, and 17. Any additional school closures will impact spring break. One additional emergency closure will require the choir attendance on April 5, and a second emergency closure will require students and staff to come to school on April 6. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Boston for a report of the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Good evening again. The 2017-2018 Finance Audit and Budget Committee members include Dr. Sigun Eubanks, Mr. Nor Hernandez, Mr. K. Alexander Wallace, Ms. Amania Page, Ms. Sonya Williams as vice chair, myself, the chair, Mr. John Pfister, the CFO, and Mrs. Michelle Winston as Director of Internal Audit. The Fab Committee has convened five times this school year to discuss an array of topics to include FY 2019 board budget priorities, external auditor presentation, findings and recommendations from those groups, the first quarter. findings and recommendations from those groups, the first quarter internal audit report, and various internal audit reviews were also discussed at these meetings, the CEO's proposed budget challenges and opportunities. Some of the accomplishments thus far have been Board Budget Priorities. Through a survey administered through the full Board and the Fab Committee, through the, through, I'm sorry, administered to the full Board, the Fab Committee identified the five top budget, Board Budget Priorities for FY twenty nineteen, which include maintenance funding, student-based budgeting, English language learner support, compensation negotiated agreements, pre-kindergarten expansion. The Committee further proposed funding in the following areas: community schools, literacy and numeracy, career and technology education, and student safety. Some of our future topics for the discussion over the next coming months for the school year is to review the FY twenty nineteen budget, bearing in mind feedback and discussion from the Board, budget work sessions and public hearings, review second and third quarter report from internal auditor, review and discuss impact of county executive's budget proposal, review and discuss impact of county council-approved budget, review with PGCPs CFO the anticipated Prince George's County financial condition for year in June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, debrief on FY twenty nineteen budget process. Future events: the Board will host its Founder Board Budget Work Session and Budget Public Hearings on, I think it's next Tuesday, I think you said on next Monday?
Tuesday.
Yes, at Oxon Hill High School. The executive session will start at, the work session, I'm sorry, will begin at five PM, and the public hearing will begin at seven PM. In closing, I would like to thank the Fab Committee members, the CEO, and administration for their efforts in ensuring this budget season is a collaborative, thought-provoking, and strategic process that move us closer to our two thousand twenty goal. Thank you.
You want to talk about your announcement?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to recognize or take a moment of silence for one of our, our Prince George's County family members that we lost since the last time that we met, Mr. Bryant Washington, Knightley Custodian at William Packer Elementary School. So we can have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Our thoughts to Mr. Washington. We apologize for missing him in the initial one, and I'm sure many of the other loved ones. And we will now take the time to move on to the public comment section of our agenda, Agenda Item three point one. We have seven registered speakers this afternoon. Just a quick note on that, you, a registered for public comment, you must speak on the topic for which you've been registered, and the Board will listen but cannot address your comments. At the sound of the buzzer, please complete your last sentence only, and you may not relinquish any part of your time to another registered or unregistered individual. We also ask, you are encouraged to use titles rather than names, Board Member, CEO, et cetera. And if you have a written copy of your statement, please leave it on the file box next to the speaker stand so that we can put it in the record. Again, we have seven registered speakers, and our first registered speaker is Phyllis Wright. Is Ms. Wright with us this afternoon? Ms. Wright? Okay, I hope that Ms. Wright decides to come back at the next meeting. Is Andrea Davis here with us this evening? Come right on up, Ms. Davis.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Andrea Davis, and I am a mother of two wonderful students that attend PG County Schools. I am actually a product of PG County Schools. I graduated from Crawson, just like Mr. Burrows. So I have a understanding of what it means to be a product of this county's school system. The reason I'm here today, it says budget by my name, but specifically, I want to talk about some of the school-based budgeting and getting more creative programs into our schools. Just like the video we watched earlier with the students having the outdoor classroom and being able to interact with nature, I feel like that's something that is missing from our school systems that can really help prepare them, especially with careers in like green energy and renewable energy. If we are preparing our students for this twenty-first global economy, we have to look at the industries that are growing. And right now, we know that green energy and technology is a growing field. With that, one of the things that stifles some of the creativity in our students is the standardization that comes with a lot of this rigorous testing. I have a seventh grader, and she literally freaks out when she has these county tests, these state-level tests, because it's being drilled in her head that it's, it's very important and they have to prep for that, along with all the other exams and testing that she does on a, on a classroom level. There was one time when she was sick, and she, she was so afraid, she was fearful to miss school because there was a county test that day, which there's one today as well. I don't have a problem with testing, and I'm not against testing, I just feel like the amount of testing that we're putting on the children may be adding to some anxiety level within them, and I wanted to address that. And as we're preparing our students for college and careers and lifelong success, I want to make sure that we're not missing one of the key elements for success in this day and age, which is really about a continued investment in oneself. What are we doing to help these students understand that personal growth is a process that they have to continually invest in to continue to become the person that they want to be? I see my time is running up really fast. I do have faith in the creative abilities of our students, and I feel like the sky is the limit. I just feel like we need to address more creative programs, decrease the amount of the rigorous testing, and increase the scope of possibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Our next speaker is Josephine Mourning.
Good afternoon to everyone, and congratulations to all that received the award. My name is Josephine Mourning, and I am the Chairwoman for the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Prince George's County. And in that capacity, I also operate as Director of Direct Action. And for those who do not know, the SCLC, which is what we call it for short, was started by Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. The reason I'm here today is I was invited to a meeting a few weeks ago regarding quite disturbing information on the Prince George's County School Class of two thousand seventeen. In summary, I was made aware of an unacceptable number of students being cleared for graduation who did not meet the requirements. I've not seen any data to support this information or narrative from school officials that either confirm or dispute the current political media and community buzz about this. As an elected official of the SCLC, it's my responsibility to keep these students and our graduates at the priority, and to mitigate the current climate of agendas politicized against our children, who are the victims. So if data does indicate that a number of students were passed through without meeting the state's graduation requirements, these students, our graduates, need to be made whole. We need to find out where they are and how they are feeling. The county needs to partner with its higher education resources, such as Bowie State University, Prince George's Community College, and our University of Maryland College Park, for evaluation and remediation services and programs, if necessary, to ensure these students are stabilized and have a foundation to be competitive in the next phase of their lives. What I found most alarming is the silence from those who should be out front protecting our children and the educational system, the superintendent and the school board. It is obvious that a school board controlled by the office of the county executive would lose its independent voice, which means our babies and their families do not have a voice. It is also obvious that the superintendent appointed by the county executive instead of the school board loses his voice in his current administration configuration. The school board and its accountability to the residents of Prince George's County must be restored. There has to be systems in place to promote transparency and accountability. There are a number of guiding principles that promote accountability for educating our children. For example, Bridge to Excellence and Prince George, and Prince, and Public Schools Act calls for the state to set academic performance standards for students, ensure that schools have sufficient resources to achieve them, and hold schools and school systems accountable when they fail to meet the standards. It is my understanding that each school provides a master plan that's conditioned for the release of its funding. To better examine if adequate resources were provided to those high school in question, I'm asking if there is a copy of the master plan and also the audits that were conducted related to this matter, which I think we discussed earlier. Is that the buzzer?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So that means that I have to stop?
Pretty much, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I will put it in here. But in, in closing, I think that it would be very important if we could temporarily appoint a school czar to look into these students, because lack of education leads to mass incarceration, and that's what we're trying to stop and decrease. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jay Parker.
I come before you today with the memory of my former student Derrick Staton on my heart. He was a student from Henry J. Wise, District Seven, who was recently struck and killed by a police vehicle this past January. His bright smile and his work ethic and his dedication to the community will be sorely missed within Prince George's County. In thinking about him and what I taught his former students and classmates as well, I think about how much I emphasized accountability with my students, and how much that theme has gone through Prince George's County schools from their educators, their administrators. It's disappointing that that theme is only being enforced, reinforced, and taught to our students, but it's not actually being implemented by the people that we have elected or that people who are appointed are doing. I went to the meeting that the CEO referenced earlier in his report, and I heard what can only be categorized, and I balk at the use of such a strong term, as lies. But I guess we live under a, we live in perilous times now, where when you're not under oath, you can actually go before a state board and give false information, misleading information, and just say it with a straight face. I mean, i- in relation to the administration that's in the White House, I guess that's where we're leading to. But it shows that no matter the party or the affiliation, that's just what's going to be done when it works in our favor. I heard strong implications that the grade changes were facilitated, this is a direct quote, "were facilitated by parents," and that teachers who do not have any access to changing the grades were the ones that were doing it. And yet, this came out of the same mouth that is going to turn around and say, "We have great public schools, our educators are great, and yet, no one is holding this person or these people accountable." It's just disappointing. Like I said before, I, it's, it's just disappointing to come and talk to the Board week after week, month after month, and say the same thing without any changes. So, parents, I d, I really urge you to think about what you're going to do within the next few months in this election cycle. Our county executive said that he is not holding the CEO accountable and to hold him accountable. So do so when you go to the polls. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jim Cullen from AAFNE-AFSME, Local twenty-two fifty.
Good afternoon, members of the Board and Dr. Maxwell. As you know, my name is Jim Cullen, Administrator of AAFNE-AFSME, Local twenty-two fifty, representing over six thousand education support professionals at PGCPS. Today, first of all, congratulations, Dr. Maxwell, on your fortieth anniversary of public service. And today also is the fortieth anniversary, as many of you may know, of the, of the death of a Cole, Echo Cole and Robert Walker, who were killed on the job in Memphis when they, which led to the historic strike, Memphis Striker of Sanitation Workers. Dr. Martin Luther King ultimately gave his life in this historic struggle for respect, worker rights, and economic justice. I've brought some extra pins. We're commemorating the anniversary with the I Am Two Thousand Eighteen movement, because public employees, quite frankly, are under attack nationally. And as, as they were struggling fifty years ago, there's many who would like to pull, pull the rights of public employees back to those times, and so it's a very, very important fiftieth anniversary. I've handed, you know, so I've got extras of those up here. In the spirit of this, I'm here today because we asked the Board of Education to respect the educational support professionals of PGCPS. And there's a couple of issues I want to talk about. First, since last year, we have been requesting negotiations dates from ELRO for our CBA that expires June thirtieth of this year. We had successful negotiations on the wage reopener, but we're discussing the, we're discussing the two thousand nineteen budget, and these negotiations are part of that. And so, we, you know, we have no date yet. We ask that you instruct ELR to sit down with, with our team immediately, and our team is here today and have been working and preparing and are ready to sit down. We also ask that the fiscal two thousand nineteen budget include resources to fund all costs in our current CBA and increases commensurate to other negotiated agreements like PGCA for two thousand nineteen, for that period. We should not have to arbitrate over benefits already in our contract that have been agreed to. For example, the second issue I wanted to talk about is, for example, this five percent license certification and maintenance. I was here last November bringing this issue to your attention. To date, these skilled employees have been working hard over the winter and cold times, still have not been paid, and they don't have a time on when they will be made whole for this, this contractual, it's in the contract, it's indisputable. We have a proposed settlement, and we'd like to see that paid immediately. We'd ask that you instruct ELR to do so. That would create a lot of goodwill and, and ease the tension. There's, there's, you know, folks are emotional about this because they were told one thing and it hasn't happened. So let's, you know, again, let's continue to build on the progress of last year by sitting down together now and partnering for progress in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen, very much. Our next speaker, while she needs no introduction, she's right here, Ms. Teresa Dudley, President of PGCEA.
Ms. Teresa Dudley, President of PGCEA, said that her voice is bad, she has the flu, so she wanted to know. Could I speak on her behalf?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Hello, my, I know you said no names. I am a current educator, high school educator at Central High School. I teach physical education, and I lead the college summer program there. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Black Lives Matter in our school's Week of Action, which provides for educators K through twelve an optional curriculum to teach during the day. This initiative was inspired by the current endorsement from the Maryland State Education Association, which led for our local association, Prince George's County Education Association, to also move in favor of that. Black Lives Matter at school is not an official part of the Black Lives Matter movement. It was established by a small group of parents and teachers and community members who shared a vision of diverse community partnerships that could create a week of education and dialogue and action that would actively engage a significant number of educational communities through Prince George's County in activities which support understanding and affirmation of black lives. This week has been at the beginning of ongoing dialogue of education and action. We are seeking the Board of Education's support on this, that's why we're present here. This resolution calls on the district to explore and grapple with the past, present, and future status of black lives in our society, and to affirm the status as equal to and not second to the lives of others. Educators have the choice about how to participate. Teachers will have the ability to either design their own lesson plans to facilitate or facilitate conversations among students and colleagues about race, which would include the Black Lives Matter movement. They could invite- They could invite local activists or experts and as guest speakers or to wear T-shirts or stickers that would make their support visible. Students would be encouraged to be involved in sharing their experiences with their student, with their school communities. We encourage the district staff to also use the resources that would be provided to them via lesson plans so that it would kind of eliminate some of the extra preparation that would be put on teachers if they did want to partake in this endeavor. The most important thing we can do, we can do is to use relationships we have with students to share powerful, thoughtful, engaging, and respectful dialogue in classrooms across the city or the district. So, yes, we understand that all lives matter, but of course, within our district, 61% of our students are black. So that is a primary reason why we believe that it would be ideal for us to support and endorse this Black Lives Matters Week of Action within our schools. And in closing, we also, the association also does support nonviolence and support the Peace Week Initiative as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our final registered speaker this afternoon is Ronald Lee from Local 2250.
Good afternoon. My name is Ronald Lee. I'm with Maintenance, and I'm part of Local 2250. Jim covered some of the base of what I'm doing. I'm going to just shoot all from the heart and tell you how it is. We feel that y'all are not obligation or anything. You're treating us like garbage. That contract you agreed to, both parties agreed to that contract for our workers, our hardworking men and women. Why aren't y'all holding up your end of the bargain? We do. We're out there until 2:00 in the morning sweating pipes, making sure these schools are open. We're out there shoveling the snow, making sure it's safe for kids to walk. We're entitled to what's owed to us. We're not asking for nothing else. We're not coming to you saying we want this and stuff. You agreed to it. The 5%, you came to us and said, let's come to, let's resolve this. We held up our bargain. We we did a vote where we lost money. We lost a lot of money. So you could resolve this problem. You haven't resolved it. Now it's, there's no money. It's not in the budget or whatever excuse you come up with. Honor what's owed to us. It's all we're asking, guys. That's it. We hold up our end of the bargain, and if we don't, you hold us at high standards, disciplined action. What about you? You're taking food off of my table. I don't make a lot of money, either do a lot of these men and women behind me. 5% might not be a lot to you guys. That means my kids get Christmas. My daughter might be able to get a new book bag. Or my daughter, my wife that has cancer might be able to get her prescription. You're playing with people's lives. Knock it off. Games are over. We're not going to stand for it no more. Local 2250 has a big attitude change. Out with the old, you're looking at the new. We're not going to tolerate being walked on ever again, ever. We do our job, do yours. We make sure these kids are safe every day, every day. All we're asking for is a little bit of respect. Respect goes a long way, and honesty. If you don't have the money, be honest. Don't, don't blow smoke up us. Got it? Just be honest. We're men and women. We all understand. We all have hard times, all of us. Let us help you succeed. Get to the bargaining table, please, with us before you do your budget, please, because we're not going to take your crumbs no more, no more. All we want is respect. Please give it to us. Have a good day.
Thank you for that powerful and important testimony, and thank you all for taking the time to speak to us today as a board. We hear you, and we will continue to do what we can to work on your behalf. And at that, we will move on to our agenda. We have a discussion item on High Quality Career and Technical Education, CTE, preparing colleges for cor- I'm sorry, preparing students for college and careers. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of this discussion item.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Monica, Dr. Monica Golson, our wonderful Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and her staff will provide an overview of this discussion item.
Good afternoon. Before they begin, I just want to acknowledge that February is Career and Technical Education Month, so it's great that our team is able to present to you today. They will share with you the purpose, the benefits, and next steps as it relates to career and technical education. And also, towards the conclusion of the presentation, share with you information about our CTE Task Force. So I turn it over to the leaders of our Career and Technical Education Program, Latifa Durant and Pamela Smith.
Good afternoon, Dr. Eubanks, Ms. Boston, members of the board. Today's discussion item will focus on PGCPS's Career and Technical Education Programs. Again, my name is Latifa Durant, the Officer for College and Career Readiness and Innovative Programs. Presenting along with me is Mrs. Pamela Smith, the Coordinating Supervisor for College and Career Readiness. And together, we're going to present our programs to you. We're especially excited to be able to present to you on today, the first day of CTE Month. It is the mantra of PGCPS to graduate all students, college and career-ready. We all know and agree that academics is important, but technical skills are just as important. In today's economy, students need both the academics and the technical skills to be successful. Our career technical education programs are the vehicle by which PGCPS can realize the college and career readiness vision for all of its students. Providing career and technical education prepares our students for life after high school and helps ensure the economic prosperity of Prince George's County by developing our workforce. Before we get into the presentation, I do want to bring to your attention some of the items that have been prepared for you today. You have in your possession a data booklet. This booklet outlines all the programs in our pro- in our district, as well as you have a listing of all of our career and technical education programs, as well as where those programs are located. And you've also been provided with a copy of our CTE Task Force Report, which we will talk about later today. By the end of our presentation, you will be equipped to communicate and advocate on the purpose and benefits of the district's CTE programs. In addition, you will have a greater understanding of our CTE data and the strategies being implemented to continuously improve the outcomes of our CTE students. CTE programs are ever-changing to meet the country's educational and skill needs. Our CTE programs are creating an educational environment that combines core academics with real-world application. At its core, the mission of CTE is to prepare our students for success in college and careers by helping them to develop the skills and the technical knowledge, as well as the academic rigor and real-world experience for high-skill, high-demand, and highly-successful careers. Over the years, we have transitioned from the old vocational technical education model, also known as VOTEC, to the new career and technical education model. In the old vocational technical technical education model, college was not an option for our students. You learned your trade, but students weren't prepared for higher education. Also, in the old model, it was for specific students, particularly those who weren't planning to go to college. Instead, the focus was on completing their high school with a skill in order to go directly into the workforce. Conversely, career technical education provides students with options. They may choose to continue their education in college, or they can choose to go into a career with an industry certification. CTE is for all students, of all academic levels, of all genders, of all ethnicities, and of all abilities. Students in CTE programs experience a rigorous curriculum that is connected to the the career that they're interested in. Because our CTE programs focus on academics, career experience, and 21st century skills, our students are prepared to go to college and into the workforce after graduation. The data tell us that CTE programs have a positive outcome, a positive impact on student academic outcomes as well. Our CTE students are more engaged, and as a result, they are less likely to drop out of high school. Our CTE graduates, they graduated higher rates than the national and the local graduation rates. And contrary to popular belief, CTE students typically go on to college. They go on to post-secondary education after graduation. And participating in CTE not only provides a rigorous and relevant curriculum, but it also affords students an opportunity to graduate with tangible benefits. Many of our programs provide students with college credit, either through dual enrollment, transcribed or articulated credits, and our students are earning anywhere from three to 12 college credits. Our other programs also include advanced placement courses, and most of our programs provide students with industry certifications and credentials. Our students benefit from career readiness activities, such as work-based learning and internship opportunities, and our students are able to work in the careers that they're studying. They have the opportunity to compete against students across the county, across the state, and across the country. The academic and career activities our CTE students participate in make them eligible and competitive for full tuition scholarships in their CTE field. For instance, just last year, our culinary students earned about $300,000 in scholarships to some of the most prestigious culinary institutions in this country, including the American Culinary, the Culinary Institute of America and Johnson &amp; Wales. Our district, we offer over 40 programs and 11 career clusters. This gives students the opportunity to select a program of study while they're in high school that's tied to their career interests. We offer traditional trades like carpentry and HVAC, as well as our STEM programs like Project Lead the Way, biomedical science, our Great Fire Cadet Program you heard about earlier today, our IT program that was acknowledged today at Gwen Park High School. And our CTE programs serve over 6,500 students throughout the county. As an insert in your data booklet, as I share with you, there is a list of all of our programs and also the schools where they are offered. Our Pathways in Technology, Early College High School, also known as PTEC, is our innovative program that was just launched this year. Students in PTEC earn a CTE certification as well as an associate's degree. Our 61 students are currently enrolled at Frederick Douglass High School, and they'll get an associate's degree in either health information management or hospitality services management. In addition, these students get the opportunity to receive mentoring, a six-week paid internship, and first-in-line job consideration upon graduation with our industry partners.
PGCPS CTE programs offer a wide array of certifications. Our students earn credentials in areas such as pharmacy technology, pharmacy technician, CCNA, GNA, and those are in our Health Academy of Health professions. They also earn IT certifications such as a Cisco Certified Networking Associate or a CompTIA. We earned, in our Homeland Security, our students are earning a Geographic Information Systems, or GIS. In particular, our nursing students have a 98% pass rate on the Maryland State Board of Nursing exam. The, on the slide here, the certification exams our students take are offered through national organizations. There is no separate exam given to high school students. Our students take the same exams as any adult in the field. The assessments are provided by various partner organizations, such as NCCER for our construction trades, American Automotive Service Excellence in our automotive technology, culinary, the American Culinary Federation, and Cisco. So now that you've been told about the benefits of participating in CTE programs, let me share how students are able to participate in these programs. All of our comprehensive high schools have at least one CTE program of study. Those programs in our comprehensive high schools are three- and four-year programs, and they're offered to the students in those boundary, in that school of that boundary students. Those three-to-four-year programs include programs such as our environmental science programs, Teacher Academy of Maryland, and our Homeland Security and Emergency Prepariments. Students are also eligible to attend our two-year programs. For our two-year programs, students may have to transfer to one of our five regional CTE centers. Those five centers are Crossland High School, Gwen Park, Laurel, Blatonsburg, and Sootland High Schools. Transportation is provided for students who attend programs located at these centers. The application process for the two-year programs opens in mid-October and then it closes on March the 12th with all specialty program applications. As previously mentioned in your data book, a list of all those regional centers are there again for your referring to. You've heard about the CTE programs from our prospective students, from our perspectives. Now let's hear about the programs from our stakeholders, our students, and our business partners. Belvion Song Song was an IT student at Laurel High School who achieved one of the highest scores on the Cisco exam across the country, both among adults and students. She is now a second-year student at Rice University on a full scholarship. Belvion is majoring in bioengineering, and she has already had six job offers. Let's hear her story.
Every day, I can see my dreams coming true, and it's not just my dreams. My teachers and classmates, and students across the country and all over the world, we all share this dream of a world where we can build things, connect things, and improve people's lives.
I think a good student is someone who enjoys coming to learn. With Belle, she just wants to learn. She's dedicated to her work. She's committed to her work. So it's almost like it's natural for her. She just loves it. I think it's been easy for her. She might not say that, but that's what I'd say.
I come from a family that values education. The reason my mom came to America was for a better educational opportunity for us, so I tried my best to excel in school.
Our Cisco Networking Academy program here at Laurel High School has given us a lot of opportunities to help students to matriculate between high school and attending college, which will better prepare them for the careers they choose later.
I'm interested in doing biomedical engineering, and one of the attributes that will probably have to do with programming. So I think this is a very beneficial experience, and it's helping me to plan my career.
Cisco's Networking Academy is not only at Laurel High School. There are more than a million students just like me, working with over 3,000 teachers all across the US, studying internet and communication technologies, and building our futures.
So we're happy to present what Cisco offers to our students. It's another opportunity. There are kids who walk around the hallway and don't know what they want to do right now. And seeing that presence everywhere they go, wow, I saw the wall of fame. Can I get up on that wall? What do you guys do in that classroom? That kind of thing makes us proud to put that out and say, wow, with the opportunities that we have from Cisco, it's been great.
I see that sort of motivation. I see like we're using those skills and we can go out and do something big in the world.
I may be just one student, but I know I am making a difference. And when I think of the power of millions of others just like me all across the world, studying, learning, and helping others, now that really is a dream come true.
Mr. Jason Grusala graduated from Prince George's County Public Schools Carpentry Program. He now serves as a master foreman in our carpentry shop here in PGCPS. Recently, Jason served on the district's CTE Task Force. Let's hear from him.
Um, I think the benefits for the students in the CTE program is, you know, learning, learning the trade, learning skilled labor, um, you know, so that they're prepared after they graduate high school. All my participation greatly impacted it, as you can see, because not only did I become a carpenter, but I'm working for the school system as a carpenter. Um, well, after graduation, you know, I started working here, started my career. I did, uh, a few years after high school, attended PG Community College to learn locksmithing. Those were night classes, you know, just pick up a new trade. I mean, I learned a lot about carpentry from Mr. Mayo, and when I got out of high school, you, you know, and you start working, you see other people starting out in the trade at a low level like a helper, and then you, then you can notice that, how much more, more knowledge you know than, than somebody that hasn't had any training, starting out, and that, you know, your leaps and bounds ahead of them. I'd say, you know, if you like working with your hands, then go for it. Getting to the CTE program, fine. And, and the CTE program for schools is a, is a good way to figure out exactly what you like, if you like working with your hands. You know, you might not like working with wood, you might not want to be a carpenter, but you might like doing HVAC work or something else, and, and this is, this is a good time to, to figure that out while you're in school.
Mr. Rick Williams is a longstanding member of our Project Lead the Way Pre-Engineering Program Advisory Board. Rick is a manager at North of Gomryn. He will explain the impact the advisory board has on students and the teachers they support.
What inspired me to be a, a board member is one of the easiest questions I'm going to get to answer today. In fact, it has a lot to do with what I call the ecosystem. Being a board member allows me to talk to educators, post-secondary educators, industry, and of course, the school system. I call it taking your passion and turning it into action. And many years, we've been shoulder to shoulder with, with great organizations like University of Maryland, uh, Prince George's Community College, and industry. And because so many students have gone through the program, I run into them all the time. Sometimes it's on campus, sometimes it's just out and about. And the thing that I, I take away from that is exactly what you're asking. Well, what is it that they get? Well, they share that with me. And usually, it's in the form of their success. What are they doing today? What are they, you know, how are they accomplishing what they've accomplished? And when they're able to draw the connection between what the advisory board provided them and they're, you know, tied to their success, then what you find is, is that that's tied to the teachers. So, and when we first started this back in about two thousand, two thousand and one, students weren't sure where they were going. They weren't sure of their majors. They had never heard of, you know, a minor. And now, when we look at and ask the same questions that we asked back then, uh...
Now that you've heard from our students and our business partners on the impact of our CTE programs, we'd like to familiarize you with some of our overarching CTE data in this presentation. So again, you have a data book in your, in front of you, and I'm just going to highlight some things that you can, um, through the data book, and you can use your personal time to dive deep into that later on. As previously mentioned, CTE students tend to graduate at higher, at a higher percentage than non-CTE students. In PGCPS, over ninety-nine percent of our CTE students graduated with their four-year cohort, and we exceed, we have exceeded the state graduation average for the past three years. In CTE, it is important to increase the program enrollment of non-traditional students in order to achieve greater gender equality in the occupation. The, the term "non-traditional" refers to the student who enrolls in a program where the occupational field is dominated by the opposite sex. A girl participating in construction trades would be an example of a non-traditional enrollment. PGCPS has experienced an increase in non-traditional enrollment in our programs. In fact, we have, um, surpassed the state average for the past two years and experienced a ten-point increase from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. Likewise, the completion rate of our, our non-traditional students has also exceeded the state average, and we have over an eight-point increase from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. Attaining a technical skill is critical to student success in education and the workforce. Students in CTE programs should be able to, to demonstrate technical competency through the successful completion of a skill assessment aligned with recognized industry standards, um, industry standards. Students who pass a TSA exam demonstrate they have mastered a particular skill. These exams are not easy. As previously mentioned, there's no separate exam for high school students. These are the same exams given to their adult counterparts. For some of our students, they have to pass multiple exams to earn the industry certification. In twenty seventeen, in the state of Maryland, the average TSA attainment rate was seventy-eight percent. For Prince George's County, our TSA attainment rate was sixty-five percent. Some of our programs like cosmetology and barbering have a hundred percent pass rate, while other programs have lower rates. We are focused on implementing strategies to improve those programs with lower TSA rates. Some strategies include after-school TSA prep programs. We provide teacher coaching on, in various instructional strategies. We use online resources that assist students in preparing for the TSA exams through practice exams. We have professional learning communities where our teachers meet usually every other month, six, every six weeks or so, and they get together and do planning and professional, and, and collaborate on lesson plans. And we do training through our various vendors that we work with on programs, on tasks such as our MOS and our business programs. Here, we further see the TSA attainment rates has fallen below the state average. There are various factors or barriers to the impact of our TSA rate, which we will discuss in a moment, some of our barriers. But to improve our TSA rate, our department is offering a number, a number of, um, options for both our teachers and students, as I just mentioned, to provide support.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, while we've experienced a great deal of success in our CTE programs, we've also experienced several barriers that impact program delivery, um, and as well as increasing CTE student outcomes. Uh, many of the misconceptions about CTE stem from the old vocational model. Uh, stakeholders, community, staff, parents still believe that CTE is for failing students. Uh, as a result, our college-bound students, um, are often discouraged from participating for fear that the programs lack the rigor that they need to prepare the students for college, and we are actively working to change this perception. And while you've heard from one of our business partners, we still do have a shortage of businesses that are willing to come alongside the district to support us in providing a high-quality programs and work-based learning experiences for our students. Uh, in addition, uh, we do recognize that there's a higher rate of turnover among our CTE instructors for various reasons. Uh, higher pay in other jurisdictions or higher pay in the industry that they're coming from, particularly our engineers, um, and inability to perhaps meet the teacher certification requirements, and quite frankly, we don't have a mechanism to provide for a higher rate of pay for our industry professionals. Um, so this turnover does impact the classroom in terms of the students and their ability to master their CTE content, as well as their related performance on the TSA exams. Um, there's also a constant need to upgrade and update our technology, as well as to renovate our classrooms in order to stay current with industry standards. Our program access, um, and student recruitment is sometimes complicated by the fact, again, that our programs, or some of our programs, our two-year programs, and they require students to leave their home or their boundary school after two years to go participate in a CTE program at one of our five regional centers. Um, and then we also have challenges around students' readiness for our programs. Again, we want to make sure that our students are able to make informed choices about their high school options, as well as the skills that they need to be successful in our programs. And so sometimes without that advanced knowledge, um, there's a resultant lack of preparation for some of our programs, particularly those with a STEM focus. But while there are barriers, uh, our department is, and the, the district is committed, uh, to removing those barriers. Uh, while there may be barriers around the belief systems and business participation, um, we have been working to impact how people perceive CTE in the community, um, through engagement activities such as the College and Career Readiness Summit, the Specialty Programs Fair, the Family, uh, and the Family Institute, just to name a few. Uh, we also regularly meet with our colleagues in other departments to present CTE information to our counselors, to our schedulers, as well as our other stakeholders. We have also worked to increase our business and industry participation in CTE programs by having a dedicated staff person whose job it is to build business relationships, to support our advisory board, similar to our advisory board member you just heard from Mr. Rick Williams, as well as to provide mentoring for students. Um, we also have about twenty mentors currently serving our PTEC students, in addition to making sure that our students have internships in their career field of interest. As we've developed strategies to mitigate our instructor and technology challenges, I'm sorry, um, while there are indeed barriers, uh, also to our instructors and technology challenges, we've been working with human resources to overcome those challenges. Uh, we've been, we're also working with Prince George's Community College and Towson University, um, as well as our industry partners to recruit our teachers, uh, to address the limited professional development opportunities for some of our CTE staff. As previously mentioned, we are now providing practice support for our CTE teachers, uh, in the evening, so that we can help them in passing that exam, as well as providing support throughout the certification process. Uh, we're also collaborating with IT to meet our IT, uh, challenges. Um, we are working to incorporate our CTE program into the district's larger refresh program, as well as we're working with curriculum and instruction, um, as well as schools in our area offices, uh, on our program needs and testing cycles. So for example, we're working to make sure that schools are aware of when the CTE testing cycle occurs, so that we can make sure that students have access to the technology they need, um, as well as to ensure that there's not an overlap between our state assessments and our CTE assessments. Um, in addition, with regards to facilities, one of our instructional specialists in the department has been working for several years as a liaison to capital improvement programs to monitor our construction schedules, and then also be able to commute any challenges or delays, so that we can work with schools, uh, to solve any challenges that may arise. We've been also working to improve our program access. Um, again, we recognize the challenges of providing career exploration to our students, particularly when they're coming into our four-year programs as ninth graders. Um, and so, in order to support our schools, uh, we have been shifting our programs from four-year programs to three- and two-year programs. Now, what this does is it enables our high schools to market offerings to their freshmen, as well as to their sophomores, and it's our expectation that this redesign will help to improve the program enrollment, as well as give students, um, greater opportunity to explore those career options. In addition, we started that, um, transition this past year by shifting the enrollment in those programs away from central office and into the school buildings, giving schools and administrators more autonomy over enrolling students into the program. Um, also, to address the need, uh, to prepare students, again, for the rigor of our courses, we have offered summer bridge programs, um, and in particular, we're excited this summer to be offering a STEM summer program to help support our students in the area of mathematics in particular. So, as we move forward, uh, there are several ways in which the board can help support our district's CTE programs. You can certainly help to change that perception of CTE by promoting your CTE programs with constituents, um, and making sure that they understand that our CTE programs prepare students for both college and for career. Uh, you can help us by providing, uh, work-based learning experiences for our students, and you can help us by soliciting community and business partners to provide internships, as well as employment for our students after graduation. Uh, you can also help change state and federal policies that impede the CTE progress, uh, such as the hiring restrictions that we currently face, uh, with our CTE teachers, our industry teachers, which I'm sure you'll be learning more about this legislative session. Um, and you can also share our CTE Task Force Report, which you have a draft of today, with your constituents. To tell you a little bit about the CTE Task Force Report, um, we, this was created in order to provide, uh, an internal evaluation of the quality of our programs that we're providing to our students, and the task force has provided recommendations, um, that among other things, improve program quality, uh, improve our alignment with our post-secondary institutions, uh, helping us to make sure that we are providing our students with access to those middle-skill occupations with family-sustaining wages, um, as well as improving our CTE teacher recruitment and retention. The task force, uh, the report also addresses several of the items that, um, have been identified in the state's Kerwin Commission Report as well. Uh, the CTE report will be available starting tomorrow on our website, uh, and it'll also include a survey for stakeholder feedback, and so we'll be looking, uh, to get feedback from our students, from our parents, from our business leaders on how we can improve CTE education here in Prince George's County. So, career and technical education, uh, as we've talked about embodies, it really does embody our goal to prepare all of our students for college and careers. CTE provides the academic and the technical skills our students need to be successful in today's economy. CTE gives our students a competitive edge above their peers when applying to college and also in the workforce, and CTE prepares our students for life after high school. We really appreciate you taking the time this afternoon to learn more about our CTE programs. Uh, we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have, along with Pam Smith and myself, our other supervisors, Rhonda Taylor, Darlene Bruton, Nancy McGlore, and Keith Hayes are here as well to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
You don't have, you don't have anything to add, right?
Only my gratitude to, uh, Latifah, Pam, the rest of the team, Dr. Golson, for all of their work preparing for this today.
Thank you. So, uh, uh, the, the board is lighting up. I'm sure my colleagues have plenty of questions. Just before we, we start that, um, let me say that the, the information that you gave us was incredibly helpful today, and what we're going to continue to challenge us as a board and as administration is dig deeper into not only the great news, but the real issues around the problems, right? We need to know where we're failing. We need to know the, the challenges that you presented us. Each of them could have their own slide with data on them about what those challenges are, how long they've come, not just here's the problem, by the way, we're solving it. No, we want to delve deep into the problem. We know that it's tough to, we know it's, it's tough, because, you know, if, if, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't, and we want to help to be part of the solution, and you do that by digging deeper into, into the problem itself. So thank you very much for this great information, and I'm sure most of what you'll hear is us wanting, is digging deeper into what the challenges are and how we can address them. So with that, I have...
Excuse me, Dr. Eubanks, it's Monica, sorry.
Oh, it's Monica? Is, is that who it is?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Just wanted to bring to, um, mine...
It's deeper in here?
The deeper is in the data, which is in the book that you've been provided by school and by, um, career pathway, CTE pathway.
All right, we're getting ready to dig deeper into the deeper. And we have Wallace, Boston, Williams, Quinteros, Grady, Ahmed, and Wiseman. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the administrators who have presented before us today. I could spend, how many rounds do we have in this chair?
One point five?
Times two. I could spend a whole round on just Sootland High School, um, but I'm trying to make my questions as condensed as possible. If we could go back to slide ten, please.
We'll get there, it'll take a minute.
I guess 10 and 11. So my question on this slide, of all of these, these programs and certifications, there's a comment, I forgot who said it, that CTE is for all students, and that is my hope as well, but my colleague, Ms. Grady and I sat on a task force, I think, Ms. Morales headed up the At Promise Task Force, where a lot of the students that may not have national citizenship status in the United States of America do not qualify to pass some of these certificated programs. Are any of these programs or examinations on this slide require citizenship in the state of Maryland or the United States?
The Maryland State Cosmetology License recently has changed, they're allowing students that do not have social security numbers. They previously would let us use the school state ID, so right now, I believe it's just the cosmetology and barbering. So the others do not, do not have a requirement. So, the pharmacy technician, our students don't, you have to be 18 years old to take that, so they, they prepare for the license, there is a preliminary license they earn at the high school level, but I'm not certain if the state has a ID, there's no requirement for pharmacy tech as well.
Okay.
Right now, it's just the cosmetology and the barbering.
Okay. I got a second question, thanks, thank you for your answer. So for the examinations and certifications, they need a certain legal age limit. Say if a student graduates in June and they're 17, is their school system support until they turn 18, so they can take the assessment?
There is, so we have had students to come back, we've been, this summer, to be example, we had, we had a student that did not turn 18 through the summer, we had a teacher that we were able to provide with additional pay to support the student to continue practicing. The student had to go to an additional site up in Baltimore to sit, to take the Maryland nursing exam, and so it doesn't happen often, but when it does, we do make exceptions for those students.
Perfect, thank you. How much time I got left? Three minutes. Next question. Pipelines. There was a video of an employee that graduated from Prince George's County Public Schools through, I guess back then it was vocational program, but not CTE, right? But for current students, recent graduates, I know my colleague, Ms. Williams, had her son graduate from a CTE program. Is there a pipeline, as soon as they cross that graduation stage in May or June, they get their certification, that it's an automatic pipeline, they get a preferred application, they apply for a PGCPS job that requires that type of certification?
So we are in the process of working to develop our district apprenticeship program in collaboration with our maintenance department, and that will give students the opportunity to move from graduation into employment in PGCPS. That hasn't been finalized, but that is an area that we're working to solidify in terms of our internal apprenticeship program into the maintenance department.
Any timeline on when that will be accomplished, next school year, next fiscal year?
We have our meeting coming up next week, and from there, a timeline will be developed.
Awesome, awesome. And then, business outreach, I didn't see a slide on, I saw a slide, I think, I think slide 11...
Yes.
Had some businesses, can you...
Correct.
Take a look at one slide.
Those are national organizations.
Those are national organizations, okay. Is there, is there some data, maybe it's in the big book that I haven't opened yet, I just wanted to pay attention to the presentation, but is there a slide or a listing of local, state, national organizations and businesses that, that work with PGCPS, CTE graduates that we can, as a board, highlight, appreciate, or that we, as a board, can outreach to if there are some fields that are lacking?
Correct. So within your program data booklet, you'll see several of the partners that we have for each of the programs. In addition, we have Tara Anderson is our business liaison in the department, and her responsibility is to help improve business engagement within our CTE programs. We are also collaborating with Mr. Rose Department, I forgot the new name of it, Engagement, I've forgotten, Barbara Holstreter's office, I apologize, to create an event this year where, I'm sorry.
Chief of Strategic and External Affairs.
Thank you, Chief of Strategic and External Affairs. We have long titles. In terms of having a business event this year, where we acknowledge our business partners that have been supporting the district, both in CTE and throughout the district in other ways, and so we also have continued outreach to businesses in our community to be able to increase the number of advisory board members that are giving back to our students.
Awesome. And thank you for that direction, because I now see almost every program that the community partner, so I thank you for that. Partnering with labor unions, I don't know if, maybe it's in here, some of the community partnerships, but the Teacher Academy partnering with the National NEAPGCEA, with mentorship guidance, I know that program, I think students have to go to Prince George's Community College two years, and they can go off to a four-year institution, get certified, and then I think they come back. Is there any type of mentorship through labor unions, as well as with school support service labor unions, that they can have mentorships? I know there's apprenticeships that you just talked about, but any development in this booklet, or is that in the task force? What's going on there?
So I would say we don't necessarily have, we have a formal mentorship program for our PTEC students, it's a component of the PTEC program. For some of our other programs, there's more of an informal mentoring relationship, particularly in the construction trades, such as associated builders and contractors have invited our students in the past, just last year, to a job fair, where they're able to come and meet with potential employers, have their resume shared and so forth. Not necessarily one-on-one individual mentoring, one of the things that we've discovered in our department is doing one-on-one mentoring, and with, with all of our policies and parameters, sometimes poses a challenge for our business partners, so we've tried to do more group activities with our students, as opposed to perhaps maybe more of the one-on-one mentoring that you may have in mind. But there's a number of ways, even with our Project Lead the Way program, those students in our pre-engineering program have a networking event coming up this spring, again, where they will be networking with engineers and others in the field to learn about career options, college options, to get feedback and support. Again, those, that same board will have a senior symposium, where they will have an opportunity to review all of the senior projects and give the students feedback. So there is mentoring that's happening between our industries and our students, it may not be in the traditional one-on-one mentoring that you might have in mind.
That's fine. Not too long is fine, too. Yes, sir.
If I could just add, you know, you brought up the Teach, the Teacher Academy that we've just opened. We just had a big meeting yesterday with, I think, five or six members of the executive team, the president of Community College, the dean of the College of Education at College Park, the dean of the College of Education at Bowie State University, representatives of HACU, Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities, having a conversation about, you know, how we, how we do matriculation agreements, how we, you know, make it a seamless process from us, the community college, to the universities, much like the one we've developed with the 3D Scholars and those kind of things. So some of that work, you know, being one of our newest programs, you know, we're, we're kind of working on some of the things you just asked about, so I just want you to know that's there, I didn't want to just leave it out there.
Appreciate it, appreciate you, Dr. Maxwell. 90 seconds, okay, let me hurry up. I've given this idea some thought, just want to run it by the professionals, the experts here. I think I mentioned to Ms. Boston as well, maybe not having CTE programs for middle schoolers, but at least engaging them and seeing what their, their career interest is. I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't trust a sixth grader with electrical wiring without supervised, you know, professionals, but just, a couple of parents in my district have kind of expressed the interest of at least having, at least an entry pipeline towards, particularly around Sutland, the Sutland area, an exploration of CTE programs to introduce maybe our seventh and eighth graders into some of these CTE fields, before they even get to the ninth and grade and start looking into what is open to them. Any thought about middle school CTE?
Sure, excellent entry. This summer, we are piloting a program at Crossland High School, it's called Career Explorers. We are just piloting this year with rising ninth graders and rising 10th graders. The program will be a two-week summer program, students will be able to select two areas of study, and they will do an AM exploratory of, say, construction trades, and a PM exploratory of cosmetology. And they will go for, just, we'll do two one-week sessions. And if this week is, if this summer is successful, without entering ninth graders and 10th graders, we will then start another program for our middle schoolers during the summer, where we will do a summer career explorers. We selected the high schools, and also with this summer program, we are partnering with the Special Education Department, and our goal is to have 50% of our students with IEPs and 50% comprehensive students, so that they will all get an opportunity to explore the CTE programs.
That was a perfect segue.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. My mother graduated from Crossland, it's a beautiful school. It was a perfect segue. I was going to ask about student demographics with my, you know, failing seconds, what, you know, certain CTE programs, what their student demographics are in terms of race, socioeconomic status, special education, it doesn't mirror that of the district countywide?
The demographics aren't included in your booklet, but that is data that we can provide to you. We do have the information breakdown of, by race, by students who have IEP, are English language learners, and so forth. And again, we've been working with our departments throughout the district, such as Special Education, as well as our ESOL Office, I recently presented to our ISCO Office, again, trying to make sure that our programs are reflective of the students that we serve.
Thank you all very much. I save my Sutland High School questions for round two. Until then, I'm going to actually read the book, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Boston.
Good evening. I got a lot of questions too, so I hope we have more than one round. First one, I want to follow, I want to follow up with a question that Mr. Wallace had on Where you, I'm looking at the different, different programs here, and I'm trying to see the Adobe certification that the Microsoft Office Suite, that's the certification for the IT program, correct?
Well... No, I'm sorry. So the Adobe certification is in our interactive media production, and the Microsoft Office Suite is in our business, business administrative services?
Okay, so then my question is, I don't see any, any reference to IT program certifications, because if I'm not mistaken...
The COMTIA, A+, CSENT, and CCNA, and these are not all of the certifications listed, this is just a small representation, so I didn't list, list Parapro, which is the exam that our students take in the Teacher Academy of Maryland. We're, we're not listing our Print Ed graphics that learn, earn different, Print Ed is a program at Sutland, and all of those industry certifications that are there.
So right now, we have informal data on our students, unlike our students who go on to college, we can track our students who go on to college through the National Clearing House, but for those who go into employment, right now, we don't have a data set for them after they graduate. That has come up as well, I believe in the Task Force Report, in terms of finding ways and mechanisms that we can track our students after graduation. Right now, it's by and large anecdotal, those students who do stay in contact with us. We provide scholarships to some of our students who graduate from our construction trade programs, feedback from our teachers and parents, but we don't have a full, complete data set on all of our students after graduation.
So do you have, I know you said you also been working with some of our unions to provide some of these, these jobs, so, so are you assisting students at the end of some of these programs to actually get into some of these employment opportunities, or are our students just...
Yes, it's a combination of supports through our office, through our supervisors, instructional specialists, coordinators, as well as the teachers. The teachers actually play a very large role in helping students to receive placements after graduation, in particular, because they often come from that particular industry or trade area, and so because of their, perhaps, involvement in that union or in that particular industry, they're able to assist students with getting employment after graduation.
Yeah, I was just asking this question, because I've, I've had some unions to reach out to me and said that they have actually tried to reach out to the school system on some of the programs that they have to get our students in that are coming out of some of these programs, and they have not had much success in doing that. So, you know, I, I hope in the future that you would reach out to some of these, some of our union partners.
We actually have, we've met with Finishing Trades Institute recently, and have an upcoming meeting with them, I believe it's next week, again, because they're interested in working with our students upon graduation, and so we're looking at how we can facilitate that transition from our students from our programs into their particular union, but we're open to conversations with the other, other unions as well.
And we have several students that come out plumbing program each year who gets into the plumbing union as well.
Okay, but you don't, like you said, you don't, you don't, you don't track that data, so you don't know if they're...
Well, there is some data tracked through MSDE, so the State Department is able to track if students are employed in the state of Maryland. The only thing is that they do not, they only have if the child is employed, not if they're employed in their specific content area. So when we track, we want to track those students, if you are a carpentry student, if, if you're working in carpentry. So the state will just be able to show that Pamela Smith is working, but I could be working at McDonald's. So the data, we do have placement data, what is considered, is, the state will pull data from colleges, military, and employment in the state of Maryland, six months after graduation, to see what CTE graduates are employed, but it's not industry-specific. So we, the anecdotal data that Latifah spoke of, is, we, we want to be able to track if you are employed in the area of your specialty.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, then you track whether or not when our students graduate that they're actually employed?
Employed, but in any area, yes, the state does that.
No, I'm asking you, do we do that?
We do it informally through some anecdotal data, but we don't have a formal process where there is a, so we only have data, have data if the student reaches back and we let the, let us know, so we don't have a formal process.
Okay. So, I know, I served in the task force in, in a couple of the things, the CTE task force, and one of the things that we, we dare, we actually really dare, dig, dig deep in was how are we promoting some of these CTE programs? Now, I know it's not hard to promote programs like our Academy of Health Science, our STEM programs, those type of CTE programs, but when it comes to the trade or the career technical part, there seems to be a, some kind of way, there's a miscommunication to parents about these programs, and, you know, we talked about that during the task force, I'm hearing from parents, even when we had the, the fair a few, a little while ago, a lot of parents were shocked that they didn't even know about that these type of opportunities exist in our school system. So I want to know, what are you doing, what is your department actually doing to, to bring more awareness of these great programs? Because I believe that some of these programs that we have are great programs and great opportunities for a lot of our students, because we know all of our students may not be college-bound at this present time when they graduate, or they, they might need to get a job for whatever reason, but we have programs that can, that can train our kids with some skill sets that can actually put them out there to make some really good money, in some cases, more money than they can make when they graduate from college. So, you know, and I, and I believe that our parents are interested in knowing these opportunities for our students, but I don't think we really have done a great job, and I hope in the future that we will look at better ways of communicating more with our community and parents about these opportunities.
So we are collaborating, actually, today is a perfect day to talk about this, as we launch CTE Month on today, and we are working with our communications department on a campaign, a media campaign. They've been assisting us in reaching out to our local television stations to be able to promote some of our programs, perhaps on their morning shows. You'll also be seeing an influx of information on the PGCPS... You'll also be seeing an influx of information on the PGCPS website that talks about our CTE programs. We'll be sharing some myths and some facts. We'll be sharing some great accomplishments of our programs. You'll be seeing videos similar to the one like you saw today of Belvion Song at Laurel High School. In addition, we'll be sending out a letter to all households of 10th grade students notifying them of the programs as well as the application date. So they'll be getting little mailers so that they know that the window is open to apply for our programs. And we're also in the process of overhauling our website to be able to better communicate, not just in word, but also some of those visual pictures. Like you mentioned, the Fire Cadet video that was shown, or I believe it was Dr. Eubanks who mentioned the video that was shown, so that the public can better see and experience our CTE programs for themselves.
That's great, great. I'm looking forward to seeing some of that. So one of the things on slide 21 is we look at, it might be just redundant, but our numbers compared to the state, I think it's slide 21, I believe, is significantly lower than the state. Have we reached out to other counties to see how they are able to promote their TSA programs or career opportunity programs to increase our numbers? Because we, we seem to be very lagging a lot in the state when it comes to the technical program.
So I have, I actually am attending a meeting tomorrow with state CTE directors. So, and I also am a member of an additional state CTE directors forum. Many, not many, all other districts other than Prince George's County has a regional center for all of their programs. So the students that, that go to the programs, they either share time where they attend one high school, then they go to the academy, the center in the afternoon, or they're there the whole four years. One of our biggest challenges of recruiting students, especially those students who really want the program, is that if I'm a student at Friendly and I really want, I like to get into culinary, the fact that I have to leave Friendly with my friends for two years, transfer to Crossland into a new environment, a new location, catch the bus for 45 minutes to an hour, we lose, we accept tons of students every year. And when the parent finally realizes, oh, I have to transfer my student, we really, really lose capable students that would benefit from our programs. So that's one of the biggest barriers of getting students who really want to be in the seats. So what normally happens once school year starts, our schools do an in-house recruitment to recruit kids to fill the programs up, which some kids are blessed and thankful for the opportunity and others are kind of reluctant to be there. Okay, you'll change my schedule. But, so getting kids who truly, truly desire to be in a program outside of those five regional centers is a problem. And then the second one is the teacher. Crossland High School went two years without an IT program, without an IT teacher. So those students were not, were not able to successfully pass a TSA exam with a substitute teacher. Currently, we have electrical vacancy at Sutland. So being able to recruit and maintain, retain industry teachers has been a challenge. Our CTE staff is aging. Many of our teachers are yearly informing us if they are going to retire, but the new ones that we are recruiting, we have our supervisory staff and our instructional specialists. They have evening sessions with our new teachers to make sure that they are passing the practice exams so that we can keep the teachers that we have. But being able to retain staff and being able to get great students in the seats, that's our two biggest.
I think this is another opportunity to check with some of our surrounding districts to see, or counties to see what they're doing, that they're able to obtain the workforce for these programs and we're not. I know it's not just all that they're paying way more money than we are because maybe some of them are not.
They're not, but they have less teachers because they only have one sensor. So whereas we have four electrical teachers, they have one electrical teacher. So it's the number of teachers that we have, but we're also a very, a much larger district and we have more students to service, so.
Well, I don't know if my time is up, but I have one more question I'm going to get in this round. This is slide 25. Then I'm a little confused based on what you just said. Then I'm confused why on this slide, some of your CTE solutions was to redesign some of our four-year programs to two and, to three and two-year programs. So if the problem of getting recruitment is because students may not want to switch from a school in your two to three years, and why would we, why was one of your recommendations or one of your implementations is to resign a four-year program to a two- and three-year program?
Well, our two-year programs are, have always been two-year programs and there are two-year programs throughout the state for most parts. So for example, nursing is a two-year program. You cannot do your clinical hours until you're a senior in high school. So those two-year programs are two-year programs, our cosmetology, our nursing, the ones that we transitioned from three to four, from four years to three years, our programs such as Homeland Security where the ninth grade course was not a part of the CTE program. It was a local elective that we had created. We had our staff to create a curriculum that would just give kids some background knowledge. But what we were finding is students, they just.
Their knowledge of the program before entering, because again, goes back to the question of the middle school pipeline and how the information is shared and their awareness of the program. It gives more of an opportunity. So if you're at Sutland High School and Homeland Security is now a three-year program, you're able to explore that program for a year at the high school, learn a little bit more about it before you matriculate to the program.
So this could increase, decrease our numbers even more if you redesigned some of them. Well, I'm in there. Thank you.
Dr. Olson?
I just wanted to add one thing that Board Member Boston asked about in terms of teacher certification piece. While we were at Maryland State Department of Education on Tuesday, staff there tried to put in a modification to COMAR that allows us to hire people in the industry. For example, automotive technicians who are experts in their trade but don't necessarily have the opportunity or ability to pass the praxis or have a college degree, which is what you have to have in order to be a teacher. But the board, the state board postponed that vote. They were not in agreement at that time. Before we left, we did not get to see that final vote. And I'm sure that it will be a continued conversation, but it's a problem that exists across the entire state of Maryland.
Yeah, I agree with you because then I think we've had some conversation, Duran and myself with the Senator that are looking at trying to help us with that bill. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Williams?
First, I want to congratulate you all on the work that you do. I see a lot of it with having a center at Gwin Park High School and being on the board of the FACS. The kids are doing some amazing things and they're coming out with the ability and the skill set to succeed in a trade. So I think it's amazing. And also, when we just witnessed the Fire EMS a couple Saturdays ago, I mean, I really felt comfortable that these kids could come and save my life if I needed it. So, and also, again, like Mr. Wallace mentioned, my son, who graduated with three automobile certifications and the summer between graduating and college, he worked at an automotive shop and he loved it. So I appreciate what you all do. So when you're talking about, and I'm going to look at this data because as everyone knows, data is very important to me, and strategy is also really important, but what is most important to me is your expected outcome. So when we talk about it, and I don't know if it's in this book, so please let me know, if we're looking at the data comparing our TSA numbers to our state numbers, are we looking to implement these strategies to overcome the barriers to reach a certain outcome? What are you, how are you going to be able to measure that we're moving in the right direction or if we have to alter the strategy that you put in place? What are your milestones for measurement that can indicate whether or not we need to continue or we need to alter your strategy?
Every year, we communicate to the state what our goals are in each, in various areas related to our CTE programs, everything from enrollment, non-traditional enrollment, TSA attainment. And so we are constantly in a process of how can we improve, how can we do better? What's the goal? We always striving for 100%. And so we will have to keep working until we get there.
Right. But if you're, if you're implementing things like changing how we deliver the service, a four-year versus a three-year, are you keeping, are you, do you have a target in mind first year change? Because we're not going to go from 67 to 100%, we know that. But are we looking to see, you know, if we can go to maybe 70%? I mean, what, do you break it down like that or are you saying that it's 100%?
Well, one of the reasons why we went back, so the programs originally were three, two, three and two-year programs. And we changed the implementation process with the career academies to make them four-year academies. So when we sat and we looked at the data from the change from a three-year program to a four-year program, we looked at the retention rate, how many students started in the ninth grade versus, and then how many were retained to the 12th grade program. And we compared when it was a three-year program to when it was a two-year program, when it was a three-year program to when it was a four-year program. And so we found that our retention rates, our enrollment rates were actually higher. So right now, we service 6,500 students. In 2010, we serviced 15,000 students in CTE programs. So our enrollment took a drop. It is now on the rise again. So we are adjusting to our programs to, actually to a format that we saw that was successful. TSA data was not, in different programs was stronger before, it was worse before and it's better now. So various things have, we do look at those data numbers, look for enrollment, look for TSA, look for our non-traditional, look for our numbers of IEP students that are enrolled. And that's a measure and a reason behind the redesign of the program.
So you're looking at a trend, not really a number. You're looking at an upward trend.
Correct.
So I want to follow up on Ms. Boston's question around communication. That strategy is so important in order to make sure our parents are aware that these programs exist. Because we hear a lot, you know, we have no programs, we need, you know, different programs. We had someone speak today about programs and the availability and things like that. We have a lot of programs that are available. And in one of your slides, it mentioned that the application, open window started last year in the fall.
It started when we had our specialty program showcase at Sutland High School for all the specialty programs in the district. We opened it so it was available that night.
And so I think that it's so important that parents know that. Because I wasn't aware. I was surprised to see that it was open for such a long period of time. And so the communication strategy, what, what are you all doing? And maybe you mentioned it, to make sure that the middle school and the ninth and 10th grade parents are familiar with the programs and the availability.
So we actually have a team within our department that has developed a communications plan. As we mentioned, we're actually working in conjunction, not only with the communications department around CTE month and how we can promote our programs during this very special month, but how we can do a better job of communicating our programs throughout the year. And so there are a number of ways that we plan to do some increased outreach to middle schools, one of which is providing them with a toolkit to each school, to particularly the counselors, so that they have at their disposal information about our programs, that they're able to answer questions when they arise. As mentioned earlier, we do meet with our counseling counterparts, schedulers, so that as counselors meet with students and meet with parents, that they're equipped. We may not be in the middle school building, but their counselor is there. So how can we make sure that the counselor knows everything about the programs to be able to effectively communicate the information to their students? We're also looking at ways that we can do school visits. So having middle school students come and visit our high schools to actually see the programs in action is another strategy. And then again, as was mentioned, starting our Career Explorers Camp for students to be able to, again, gain information and access to our CTE programs. It is an ongoing effort. As I mentioned, the department has a communications plan. We're working with the communications department, not, like I said, not just on CTE month, but for our broader communications plan to make sure that students and families, we can increase their awareness of what great programs the district has to offer. We offer over 40 programs. And to your point, not everyone is aware. And so how can we make sure that everyone knows what options are available to them?
Yeah, it's just so important to have that line of communication open and to get the information out in a timely fashion. And my last comment is about the challenge of transferring students from one school to another school. It is, it is, I don't know, any student would want to go to their rival school because I graduated from Crossland and I would never want to go to Friendly, you know, after I've been there for two years. So that is, that is a big challenge. Is there a way that we can look into, as we go through this exploratory summer program, if a student is really interested in going to a school that's outside of their boundary because that school has the CTE program that they want? We can, there is a challenge, at least at Gwin Park, that if it's nearing the over, it's our state rated capacity, so they're never on that list of open transfer. So, but if a student has a passion, like my son would bleed motor oil if you cut him, you know, so for his ability to go to Gwin Park was, you know, it changed his life literally. So a student that has a passion for something, can we look at how we can allow that student to come into that program? I mean, I could show you cars from when he was two that he talked about. You know, if we could, if we could look at how we can allow those students to transfer into those centers because they have that passion, it would be helpful so that they would not have to do that transfer in the middle of their high school year.
So I would say two things. One, in the task force report, there is a recommendation about how we could approach that particular challenge through a, through a center where students would enter in the ninth grade. So I would encourage you to review and encourage your constituents to review and provide some feedback on that particular proposal in the task force report. The second thing I would mention is, since you talk about Gwin Park, we're actually looking at piloting at Gwin Park, an option, an opportunity for our Fire Cadet students to enter in ninth grade for next year. Again, starting with a small number, because as you said, the school doesn't have a lot of capacity, but allowing 25 incoming freshmen to elect based, of Gwin Park being their CTE boundary, so not just that's their feeder school, but within that CTE boundary because transportation is already provided, giving them an opportunity to come to the school in ninth grade. That also gives us an opportunity to help build their skills so that they're ready for the Fire Cadet program, in particular, the physical aspects of being able to access the program. And so we're piloting that actually at Gwin Park for next year in consultation with the principal. And so hopefully, as we see success there, we're able to expand.
Thank you. I'm sorry. So thank you. We're going to move on to Ms. Cantaro's Grady. And, but colleagues, I'm going to say this. I've gotten a couple of notes from colleagues. We're already past our three o'clock and we have a lot of other business to attend to and I might be in danger of losing quorum. So what I'm going to do, and I really apologize to staff because this is super inconvenient for you, but at 3:45, I'm going to suspend discussion on this discussion item, go back to the, to our business so we can finish the rest of the business and then try to come back at the end, if we still have quorum, to answer questions. Or maybe folks would be willing to put their questions in writing, but we'll see. Right now, you know, frankly, look, we only had three people talk that took the last half hour and I have one, two, three, four, five, six on the list and another one already buzzed in for round two. So, you know, we have to conduct our business. So I'm going to ask Ms. Cantaro's Grady, and that means they're on the clock. I'm going to put you all on the clock too, so let me keep your answers nice and short. Ms. Grady?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for all your work around the CTE and I know there's also just a great support with the Curwen Commission. I held a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Senator Pinsky, giving a little bit of a preliminary report and CTE was highly supported. So it's a matter of, you know... So it's a matter of, you know, seeing where those funds, as all of the pieces that he was conveying to us had a price tag that was going to be determined. Just, I think for me, it's a couple of comments, since a lot of my colleagues have touched base. I think, you know, and I just glanced at information that was given. But with, I guess, and you don't have to sort of, this, these would be comments. I see that there's a number of young people that were sort of served in my question or sort of just seeing if some of the information could be where, what is the goal that you're trying to meet per year? Like how many students are you trying to serve per program, right? So the goal, the recruitment, like what's the benchmark? So if like this year, we had four in such this program, is next year the goal to recruit a certain number of students? And is there, are there slots that are, you know, the maximum? So I, I don't have a sense, because you, you could get, the word will go out more, parents will tell parents, students will tell students, but then the question becomes, what are the capacities and, and all of that? So just, it's more about clarity there. And then when young people complete, a big piece is, I think one thing is the certification and then being prepared to actually have the job placement and, and keep the job. I know I've done different programs where we surveyed the employers, and employers, it's the interpersonal, it's the essential skills that are huge in sort of giving that young person the opportunity to work. So I don't know if you've considered, I know the mentorship piece, you mentioned some reservations and have to do well with the boundaries and sort of some of those things. But with the summer jobs, with the county in place, for example, could there be opportunities in which you track through like a database of your young people that, here's the carpentry, here is, but here's this? And then in the summer, they go into summer jobs, placement, and actually hands-on experience where then they're getting coached about, you know, how to, how to really handle themselves at the job. This way, they can get paid through SYP, but then their training is coming still through us PGCPs.
We have a collaboration with the Office of Human Resource Management at the county for the past three or four years. Their application actually asks students to indicate what career academy or CTE program they are enrolled in so that we can then help to match our students who are in our CTE programs with the appropriate employment at, through the Summer Youth Employment Program.
So I haven't gotten to read your, any of your data, but I think that would be really excellent because that's really connecting all our resources together and maximizing, but more importantly, giving young people hands-on experience, which that really makes a difference once they're ready to, to finish up. I think the other piece, I'll just reiterate a little bit of what Mr. Wallace mentioned, and that's just as you scan the different DLR, sort of, what do you call, requirements? That if the requirement is such things that have documentation, and we don't tend to ask some young people about their legal status, but I would hate for a young person to sort of, I don't know, like being able to really talk this through, how did they invest this time and only come to an end to realize that they really can't, can't really do the, the work or what have you? Or like at least being upfront about what is needed so that they make the decision, they can just go ahead and know that at the end, they still can't end the certification, but they have the skills. I, I'm not sure, just, that was fruit for thought. Thank you, that's, that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So without objection, colleagues, I, I will, I will move on now. Just to say, it's worth noting, this is why we do work sessions. This was scheduled to be a full two-hour work session so that we can delve deeply into these important topics. And so we apologize that you didn't get that deep, full two hours, but we had to cancel when we came, when the meeting got snowed out, we had to move it. So without objection, what I'm going to do is now, so we don't move into another discussion, move on to the rest of the agenda and see how far we get. Ask you to stick around, if you all have kind of your own family obligations that are requiring you to get out of here, because I know your schedule said you'd only be here till three, please, please do take those family obligations or personal or work obligations that you have, and we'll figure it out. But, but for now, if you can, to, to stick around.
So Dr. Eubanks, some of them do have children to pick up after school and those things. So we would really prefer if you can send us questions, and we'll send the responses back to the whole board. If that will work for the board.
So we'll see, we'll see what happens in there. I know Ms. Golson's stuck here for forever, so maybe we, she can, we'll, we'll, when we come back, we'll, we'll see what kind of questions folks have, and, and we'll check back in at, at, at the end.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. But absolutely, if folks have family obligations, please do, let them make sure they can take care of that. So with that, let's go to item five point O, which is the consent agenda. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items five point one through five point six under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items five point one to five point six on the consent agenda requires board approval of proclamations commemorating the following during the month of February in Prince George County Public Schools: African-American Read-In Month, African-American History Month, Peace Week, National School Counseling Week, Career and Technical Education Month, and a resolution regarding Black Lives Matter at school.
Thank you, colleagues. May I have a motion to approve items five point one through five point six under the consent agenda?
Some move.
It's been moved and seconded, and third and fourth, and I had a feeling Ms. Ahmed might want to make a brief comment.
Yes, I did. I just wanted to thank PGCEA for bringing Black Lives Matter Week of Action to my attention. You all know, as soon as I found out, I reached out to board leadership and to my fellow colleagues on the board with this resolution. Colleagues, to me, this resolution is really a testament to our shared values of equity and justice. And I believe, at the end of the day, we cannot ignore the reality of our society. And that reality is that our societal systems and structures were not built for people of color and minor, or minorities. As a majority-minority school district, our children and families in PGCPs see this truth. They live and breathe it every day in the form of microaggressions or profiling or even downright prejudice. Racial bias and discrimination hold us all back, and it's high time we embrace this reality and encourage education around social justice in our school communities. So with that, I ask and request support from you all to pass the resolution along with the other items and proclamations under this consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Seeing no further discussion, I will put the vote before you. All in favor of approving items five point one through five point six under the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Please, all those polled say no. Thank you that quest, that motion carries. Thank you for all of these great proclamations. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items six point one through six point six under the budget consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks, members of the board. Item six point one to six point six on the budget consent agenda requires board approval of the February two thousand and eighteen expenditure requirements, fiscal year eighteen financial review and transfer, award of construction contracts for projects at Kenmore Middle School, the new Adelphi Area Middle School, the new Glenridge Area Middle School, and Benjamin Stoddard Middle School.
Thank you, colleagues. We'll entertain a motion to approve items six point one through six point six under the budget consent agenda.
Can we pull item six point two for comment, please?
All right, do you want to debate it or just have a comment? Because we can do it either way. If you, if it's just a comment or question, we just leave them together.
There's a number in there that I think should be a different number, so I just want clarification, it might change.
I see other people buzzing, do they want to pull or do they just have comments or questions?
I just had a comment.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to pull six point two and entertain a motion to, for six point one and six point three through six point six.
I have a question for six point.
Okay, it's fine, I'll give you an opportunity to have a question, but can we, is it okay to put it on the floor?
Some move.
Moved and seconded for items six point one and six point three through six point six. Ms. Boston, you have a question on one of those?
Yeah, six point three, I'm looking at the, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the, the Kenmore abstract bid, and I noticed that Mrs. Grim, Grumman Parker was ranked number one at forty-seven, but we, we, like we took, we did the one that was seventy-six. Explain why we didn't take the one, the one that was ranked number one of the, the least expensive and why we went with, the one we went with.
No. You hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm trying to get used to this. The reason for this was, we had put a limit on the number of projects that we were given to the number ones. We limited it at two projects, and that was because once the projects go into construction, we were having difficulty with making sure that the architects had enough capacity to handle, support of the construction process. So we wanted to limit that, the number of number ones selected to just two projects. And that's why we went to the number two.
So what was the problem with number four, which was also came in cheaper?
We ranked them by their ability or the proposals that they had submitted. So we were looking for the quality of the proposals more than the amount of money that they were going to cost to do this preliminary start. So the proposals are primarily why we made our decision, but we wanted to limit the number that each group got. We were looking for more diversity in, in, in the architectural poll because we've got, we've had problems with having too many projects with one or two groups.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question on item six point six, Benjamin Stoddard Middle School. It's similar to Vice Chair Boston, I now understand the reasoning behind going to the second ranked as opposed to the first. Was there a project planning committee for this project, or will there be one for this project that was similar to that done for Sutland High School?
Hello, for the record, Elizabeth Chason, CIP officer. Yes, there will be a project planning committee for each of these projects.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Seeing no further questions, I will put the vote before you for an approval of items six point one through, and six point three through six point six on the budget consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. We'll move to six point two. Let me put it on the floor for a motion and then for discussion. Will someone please put a motion on the floor for, to approve, for, for, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item six point two. Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you. Mr. Fister, I just had a, one question. Under other instructional costs, there's a line item for seven hundred thousand dollars for the MSD graduation audit. I was looking through the agenda for the December sixth, two thousand and seventeen meeting of the Maryland Board of Public Works, where they were looking at the contract for this. And it seems that the contractual amount for the firm was five hundred thousand dollars, just under. So my first question is, why are we putting, why is this here for seven hundred thousand when that was five hundred thousand?
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed, for that question. Generally, with these type of contracts, incidentals from the consulting company are not part of the base contract. So when we first got information that the estimate for this audit would be about seven hundred thousand dollars, that's what we put aside as our placeholder, so that if there are incidentals for travel, allowances, printing, those kind of things, we would have funds available.
Okay, would, do you think two hundred thousand dollars more is, I, I see that as a bit excessive, but is that a normal stipend for that amount?
In, in conversations with our purchasing office for some of the contracts that we've entered into in, in years past, it, it's about normal for that type of a contract, yes ma'am.
Okay, and then the other thing is, in that Maryland Board of Public Works agenda, it said that the funds would, the funds would come from special funds. Do you have any idea of what that means?
Honestly, I would think that means us, because every indication since this was initiated, we would be paying this bill. And from the information that I have, we will be receiving a bill from MSD within the next seven to ten days. And at that time, I'll know the exact amount of what our cost for the graduation audit is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, I will put the vote before you to approve item six point two under the budget consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. We will now move on to item eight point one, the legislative report. I'll yield the floor to Mr. Tobias for an overview of the legislative report.
Good afternoon. And Happy New Year. Missed an opportunity to see you all last month, so it's a pleasure to be before you again. You have a legislative report before you that includes a lot of information, including an update on the governor's budget, both operating and capital, an update on some of the major state policy initiatives that are affecting public school systems, an update on the current commission and the NOT facilities commission, as well as some highlights from some of the, the top state bills that we're following. I include all of that information just to keep you all informed. I will not be going over it in this report, but we'll be happy to answer any questions you have at the end. I think the, the major thing we want to focus on today will be the local bill positions that we want to recover with the board following the policy committee's recent meeting and proposed recommendations on those bills. The local bill positions are on page eight, begin on page eight of the legislative report. Just to give a, a brief overview to everyone, most of you already know, but perhaps also for the general public's benefit, there have been eleven local bills filed impacting the Board of Education. The, the delegation has an education committee that was established last year that has already started the process of hearing these bills. So part of what you have in your packet is a copy of the letter that I provided to the education committee just explaining what a few of the proposed positions were. But they, we have been very clear that the full board would be voting on these bills at today's meeting, and we will be providing them with an update following your official positions. What I would like to do, if it's okay with you all, I'm going to go through, I'm going to, I want to leave the governance bills last because I know that there's going to be a lot of discussion, or I'm at least anticipating plenty of discussion on those bills. And so those bills are five oh seven, five oh nine, and five eleven. If, if it's all right, I'll leave those at the end, and then I'll go through the, the first eight bills and, and we'll come to those, okay? Starting first with PG five oh one, eighteen, this is a bill by Delegate Walker. It would limit class sizes in elementary schools in the school system, grades K to three, to no more than thirty students. The policy committee has recommended in opposition to this bill, based on the information provided by our budget team, this bill carries a fiscal mandate of between about three and five million dollars, we believe. When we looked at the data and saw how many students were in classes over thirty in that grade range, it's about three point eight percent of our, of our students. But as you know, there are, there are a lot of reasons why you actually may have over, what's being termed overcrowded classes. And a, a big issue for us particularly is facilities and space. So while we, we understand the intent of the bill and certainly make an effort as an administration at the beginning of the school year to balance classrooms as best as possible and to provide, and to assist schools with shifting resources or adding staff or getting creative with how they work with the available space, what this bill does not come with is a funding stream to assist the board in meeting this mandate, and it would cause a significant, significant disruption to the school system's operations. For that reason, the policy committee has recommended opposition to the bill. Mr. Chair, do you want me to go through each one, or do you want to stop for a vote after each one?
No, we're going to, we're going to take it and go through them, because then I'm going to give the chair of the committee a time. And the, the chair of the committee kind of brings this as, as a, as a full motion, and then folks can pull things if they need.
Okay, thank you. The next bill before you is PG five oh four, eighteen. It's a bill that has been introduced by Delegate Valentino Smith. And what it would do is, it relates to hearing and vision screenings. And the bill would require the board to conduct additional follow-ups with, with parents regarding the recommended stu, services for students and to establish some quantifiable goals to meet, to meet annually in terms of increasing the number of students who are receiving recommended services. The, the, the bill is, you know, as many of them are, it's coming from a good place because the, the delegate is just interested in making sure that more students are receiving services. But from the operational side... But from the operational side, there are several challenges with the bill. Just so you'll know, we screen about 23,000 students a year, and we're doing that with approximately two hearing and vision technicians. That was, that's down from four that we had a few years ago. So, there are some staffing challenges. There are some shortages we have in the school health services area. Not all of our schools even have school nurses, per se. Nurses may have to cover more than one school in order to meet the need. So, to the extent that the additional follow-ups, or even additional screenings, if the board chooses, is required, that may have a significant staff impact on us. Based on information from our school health services staff, if we needed to hire additional people, or purchase additional equipment, that could carry a potential fiscal impact of between $200,000 or $300,000 a year. I want to be clear, the bill isn't requiring us to hire anyone at this point, but what the policy committee wants is to, is an opportunity to review this as a, as a board, to determine, to follow up with our school health services staff, to figure out what is it that we're doing? Do we need to change the way in which our staff is following up with students, following up with families, the types of referral services that are being offered? And if so, can we start that conversation first locally, instead of via legislation? So, for those reasons, the committee has recommended opposition to the bill with the full intent to take it up as a, as a policy committee and board. Moving next to PG 505-18. This is a reintroduction of a bill by Delegate Angel. It relates to charter school students, and uniform, school uniform requirements, school equipment requirements, and also reports on the, both the numbers of students with disabilities in charter schools, and a range of information about the type of services that we provide to those students. This, just so that you'll know, Delegate Angel has come before the policy committee before in previous years discussing this bill. And in part, in response to the prior introduction, the school system has updated its administrative procedure for charter schools that requires those schools to post, to have publicly, publicly available information about the expected fees and costs from before and after care, transportation, specialty clubs, et cetera. Because the delegate raised an excellent point, and that is, when a, when a parent is accepting a placement after a lottery, the, the family needs to have an understanding of what they're agreeing to, and what that financial commitment may be, before, you know, the, the start of the school year. And so, we heard those concerns, and we made, we did make the change to the procedure. But what the bill does is it goes further by requiring charter schools to follow, it takes away the flexibility that they have in terms of the type of uniforms that they offer. And it also requires them to submit a comprehensive plan to the school system about how to make uniforms and equipment and supplies affordable for all families. While we appreciate the intent of the bill, we do not believe that legislation is necessary to accomplish this. This board can certainly make any change that it wants via policy, or request the administration to make certain changes via the procedure process if you want to change how you handle charter school uniforms and fees. Lastly, I'll add, as you know, charter schools are actually a matter of contract. The charter agreement is a binding contract. You're regularly renegotiating, or renewing, or going through that process with schools as well. So, there are multiple avenues that you can use to address this, but we don't believe legislation should be one of them. So, opposition, opposition is the recommendation. The next bill is PG 506-18. It's a Students with Disability Report. This is another bill introduced by Delegate Angel. And it would require the Board of Education to collect and report back on, it's a comprehensive disabilities report regarding students with disability, including demographic data, student discipline outcomes, staffing allocations, and disproportionate representation of certain, of students with disabilities among ethnicities and race, et cetera. The, the recommended position for this bill is opposition as well, primarily because we, we already collect this information as, and report it publicly. And we have provided information to the delegate's office as well about the kind of information that we have available, have provided samples. So, we collect it, and we don't believe that it's necessary to require our staff to kind of undergo a different process for a, for another full annual report, when we can simply respond when, when we receive the request for this information. I also wanted to add that, in addition to the information that is publicly available on websites, when, as it relates to facilities, and accessibility, and concerns about that, we have an internal ADA compliance office. So, we have, there are individuals and offices in place in the school system to help address concerns about accessibility. Just to give you an example, the, there was the parent, one of the parents testified in support of this bill about concerns that her child's playground was not accessible. And, and he, he's hearing impaired, and because of, because of the layout and the wood chips, et cetera, he's lost a very costly implant several times. And she just questions whether or not that's the, the best type of layout for a, a school that has a high population of students with hearing issues, and, and things like that. And they're very fair questions, but this bill doesn't, doesn't solve that problem. And so, we, we provide information about what's available, but we are recommending opposition to the legislation. Moving on to PG 508-18. This is the off, this is a introduction by Delegate Washington. This would establish an office of inspector general for the school system. If you allow me just, I'm, I'm trying to summarize these bills as best as can, but I, I want to make sure that I'm hitting the major elements of a bill. So, just give me your indulgence for a moment. This, the bill is, it's quite comprehensive. And the inspector general would report to the county council, but presumably would be, at least based on the language of the bill, would be the responsibility of the school system in terms of, of funding. The bill proposes that the, that this OIG would be responsible for investigating allegations of misconduct, mismanagement, abuse, fraud, waste, and corruption. That the OIG would evaluate the adequacy and effectiveness of our internal controls regarding accounting, finance, technology, and operations. That the IG would receive anonymous complaints against the system. And also, that the IG would report to the county council periodic reports that summarize our activities, their findings, and recommendations on improvement in the system. The, the policy committee has recommended opposition to this bill on several grounds. First, this was included in your legislative report as well from last year. Last year, the General Assembly passed a Public School Employee Whistleblower Protection Act. What that law allows, and what it provides is whistleblower protection for employees who can freely report either illegal activities within the school system, or pressure that they feel to do something unethical or illegal. This is the Public School Employee Whistleblower Protection Act. It increases the system's accountability, excuse me, the school system's accountability. And it allows the employee to report either an abuse of authority, gross management, or gross waste of money. The law also allows them to report any substantial or specific danger to public health or safety. And lastly, it allows the employee to report any violation of law. Significantly, what this law does require, though, is the employee has to first present the information to the employer, and give you an opportunity to, to respond, to cure, to address it, before they have a right of action in court. We believe that that law strikes a necessary balance between protecting the employee, and also allowing you, as the employer, to have an opportunity to respond before, before they can litigate. Secondly, the school system currently has a process for receiving anonymous reports of fraud, waste, or abuse. The Internal Audit Department has a contract with Global Compliance, which has been in place since 2005. And last school year, they received a reported 210 anonymous hotline complaints. This, this information does not go directly to our staff, but we are working with a contractor to receive it, who sends it to us, and allows us to follow a process for, for, for investigating the concerns. Again, they, that hotline is, is receiving anonymous complaints. Third, the Internal Audit Department that we have in place now substantially, and I want to be clear with my language here, not completely, but substantially performs the functions that are recommended in this bill. Our auditors, for example, do not have subpoena authority. They don't have that kind of administrative authority to depose anyone under penalty of perjury, or to seek a court order to, to compel, you know, an individual's participation with our process. They do not have that authority. But what they do have is a 15-member staff that has been looking at, think, last year, for example, they have been looking at 82 audits. They completed 82 audits, 52 of our school activity funds, eight operational, and 22 other special investigations. This information is reported in summary format to the board's committee. There, it, they also are being audited themselves, as you passed in your board policy. And this is going to be happening on, at an every-three-year period. Now, in all fairness, as a result of the, the graduation audit, as you know, Alvarez and Marcel recommended, among other things, for this board to consider expanding the role of IA, the, the Internal Audit Department. Their, their function to date has primarily been on non-academic issues. And part of the recommendation in the recent graduation audit has been to either expand their function, or to perhaps hire a new accountability officer who can handle review of not academic and non-academic areas. This board has not yet completed the process that you're going to, that you're undergoing this year to figure out what you're going to do in that respect. Are you going to change your current IA? Are you going to change your current IA, or are you going to hire someone new? So, for those reasons, both in terms of the law that's already in place, the work that's already been, being completed, and the work that you have to determine is necessary for your department, we're recommending opposition to the bill. Next is PG 510-18. This is a bill that was introduced by Senator Muse, which would require the school system to automatically return to employment any teacher or principal who's accused of, excuse me, accused of abuse or neglect, and return them immediately to their position. This, this bill was introduced, as you know, in part due to the very high numbers of staff we had out on leave last year, and the high numbers of allegations against those staff, the time that it took to, to complete those allegations. The policy committee has recommended opposition to that bill. We understand the concerns that were raised last year, but the school system has undertaken a significant revamping of policies, procedures, training for staff, and protocols. You've also committed resources to put additional staff in place to help bring those numbers down. But significantly, as the employer, the buck should stop with you as it determines whether or not an employee should return back to the classroom. We've indeed had cases where CPS has ruled something out that we have found to be a violation of procedure, egregious cases of misconduct. Where it wasn't illegal abuse, but still, it was egregious enough where the employee needed to be disciplined or terminated. So, that authority should stay with you, and the opposite, the recommendation is opposition. Next is 512, PG 512-18. I want to, want to note that the policy committee did not have, we had to hold this bill before the policy committee, because we needed some additional information from our team to make a recommendation. But the administration is bringing this bill before you with a recommendation to support with amendment. This is the School Overcrowding Reduction Act. It's an introduction by Senator Rosepip and Delegate Valentino Smith. And essentially, what it does, it's, it's a, again, it's a, it's a comprehensive piece of legislation, but the intent here is to increase flexibility in terms of the type of partnerships that the school system can enter to meet our school construction needs. It increases innovation, so thinking outside of the box in terms of how do we meet this $8.5 billion need every year? I mean, truly, the state's, the state's annual capital budget couldn't cover our needs, and we're just one of 24 jurisdictions. So, how do we meet that? And also, reducing the level of, the amount of bureaucracy, or delay, and, and agency approvals that it takes to complete certain projects. That's the intent. And so, it incentivizes school systems to bring down the cost of new projects. And if you do, it kicks in some additional state money for you to complete the project. Our administration, for the most part, very much, we appreciate the intent of the bill. And our team, Dr. Watts, Shawn Matlock, Dr. Maxwell, have been in conversations with both the bill sponsor and the county about ways that we can meet these needs. But there are four main areas of improvement, or amendment, that we're recommending, relating to making sure that the school system retains the authority to propose schools, new school developments, and leases, et cetera. We don't want to give that authority over to the county. We want that, that decision to remain.
I'm going to say, ask you something very unfair.
Sure.
Because I think I'm going to lose Quorum at 4:30.
Okay.
This is really important, and I, I know how important it is for you to discuss all this fully. And so, do your best, but, you know, just to try to, you know.
Do you, do you want me to just, since the information has already been posted on board? Do you, do you want an explanation, or do you just want me to be available for questions?
We're pretty close. I know you've got, you've got a few more. Just if you can finish all of it in the next five minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
You got it. On the school construction bill, our team, essentially, we're asking for amendments in the area of authority. Make sure that the decision about new school construction, and leases, et cetera, stays with the school system. Two, don't sacrifice quality that's going to result in higher costs for us down the road on the operation side. Three, give us flexibility as it relates to environmental requirements, because it's not an issue of safety, but it may be an issue of comfort for some of our students. And then, lastly, make sure that you use the proper price comparison or cost comparison in the bill, so that you're taking into account the cost for labor, and materials, and supplies, and geographic location, et cetera. It's much more expensive to build here, in Prince George's, for example, than in other jurisdictions. So, for those reasons, we are recommending a support with amendment to the bill. And in the, let me hit briefly 513, which is the last one before the governance. This will be quick. 513, this is a telecommunications transmission facility bill, introduced by Delegate Washington. The bill essentially requires the CEO, it prevents the CEO from signing a notice to proceed for a cell company until that company does a number of things under the bill. And among them is hold a public meeting at the school where the cell tower is proposed. The, this is in part in response to some of the concerns that were, that were raised last year about the notification. And the policy committee has recommended opposition to this bill. You have a board policy, a procedure, and contract process, a contract negotiation process by which you can, you can mandate a tighter community notification process. But, but the bill is not necessary to do that. Done. Moving on to governance. Yes? Okay?
Yes, that's still part of the same five minutes.
I got, I got three minutes. All right. You got it. No problem. Three bills, three bills pending about the school system's structure. One is a complete repeal of the new structure. No elected board, no elected members. It also removes the distinction that the current law makes between the CEO and other local schools' superintendents. And Prince George's would never, would no longer have that distinction. And any, you would revert back to an all-elected board, and any vacancies would be handled by special election process by the county council. That is PG 511, that's the complete repeal. 511-18, that is the introduction by Senator Muse. Secondly, Muse has also introduced another bill, 509. That would deal just with the county executive's authority to appoint the board chair, the vice chair, and the CEO. The board composition would remain the same, but this would affect the county executive's appointment of leadership and the CEO for the school system. And then, thirdly, 507-18 is Delegate Walker's bill. It would impact the election of the vice chair, and the supermajority vote requirement to override a recommendation from the CEO. So, under that bill, the county executive would no longer appoint the vice chair. The elected board members would appoint or vote for a vice chair. And then, the board override vote would change from supermajority to thirds, to three-fifths, which would be the difference between nine members to override versus eight members to override. the difference between nine members to override versus eight members to override. Those are the three governance bills, and the Policy Committee did not take a position on those bills. There is no position that has been recommended to those this evening.
So, to be clear, the Policy Committee voted that the board should take no position on those bills.
That is the vote.
Okay. So, what I'm going to do now is turn it over to the Chair of the Policy Committee, and if there's anything you want to add, and you can make the motion on behalf of the Policy Committee. I should note, however, that because the Policy Committee put a hold on PG 512-18, that we would need to take that separately.
Yes, sir.
So, you can take this as a group, and then we can open it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be very quick. Just for those who don't know, the way we go about deciding on what position we take as a policy committee are in a few ways. One, we look at our legislative platform. We do not currently have a 2018 legislative platform, but we will revert to our most previous legislative platform as we approach policies and legislative recommendations. We will also be mindful of the May legislative platform, of which we are also a voting member, and I'm the legislative appointee from this board. And then we will always engage in debate and deliberation as a committee on bills. And so, many of the bills you heard were voted down in line with our legislative platform, both at the local and state level, around the priority of local control, as Mr. Baez mentioned. I'll say with regard to our governance bills, we're not taking a position for now, and I'll reiterate, for now. I think it was the will of the board, and it was a majority of the committee members, excuse me, to take a position, understanding that there is history around these bills, particularly from last session. There is some division within the committee around these bills, but we also know that these bills will be revised and take on new life in the coming weeks, that we will revisit these bills as they evolve throughout the process. And so, again, I say we're not taking a position, but not taking a position for now. Thank you.
You want to make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Policy Committee?
I make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Policy Committee as relates to the legislative bills that were presented today.
To a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I will open the floor up. Mr. Burrows.
Demetrius, can you, I know you explained a little early, and I did hear some of that, and I apologize for being in and out and working on a couple of things. The opposition to the Inspector General, I don't understand the opposition to that. I would hope that we could support it with some amendments. I don't think it should be appointed by the county executive or the county council. That doesn't do anything for me, but I think the State Board of Education, or the General Assembly, or the Governor's Bill to add Inspector General, I think all of those would be good things to do. I mean, our employees need someone to go to when there is wrongdoing, and right now, I'm not confident that they have that. And so, what's the issue?
Sure, it's mainly a couple of things. One, the legislature agreed with you last year, and that's why they passed a new whistleblower protection act for public school employees. So, what that means is, the expectation is that they'll come to you with concerns, report them to you, give you an opportunity to review them, and then, if, but if anything goes down, they're concerned about retaliation or anything like that, or if anything improper happens, they have a cause of action against us under that law. They've already passed that, so the concerns about, sure.
If I can just, with that, it only includes, like, health and safety.
No, no.
It includes corruption?
Yes, uh-huh, fraud, waste, abuse.
Under the law that was passed by the General Assembly?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, it does, uh-huh, yeah. So, they have, so the idea is that, you know, substantial, when you're talking about violations of procedure and policy, that's where you're, that's where you're right about the health and safety issue. But gross mismanagement, fraud, waste, abuse, all of that's included in the law. So, that's part of it. Part of it's that we already have the whistleblower protection. The other part of it is the question, your current IA department does substantially most of this work. So, if you're interested, and this is a decision, obviously, for the board, but if you're interested in something completely new, there needs to be discussion of how that may look, and also who's going to pay for it, because you're talking about a potential fiscal impact based on the analysis done of between, based on the comparison of, like, Philadelphia, which is comparable in size, $400 and some thousand dollars to over $1.8 million, what our current budget has for IA. So, how can you, how can the question about, you know, changing what you have now or improving it, how can that stay with the board instead of automatically getting behind such a new expensive proposition?
Well, I think the difference is that IA reports to the board and to, you know, really the board chair. And so, if there are issues that involves the board, or issues that could impact the image of the board, it places, actually, is someone from internal audit here? I have a question for internal audit.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I guess what I'm trying to understand, and I think this bill could alleviate, and if this is not an issue, just let me know, when internal audit has to investigate issues that deal with the board, or deal with things that impacts the board's image, it could put internal audit in a difficult situation. I mean, do you understand what I'm saying?
I didn't.
I mean, have you ever, broadly speaking, felt like you've been placed in a difficult situation because of things related to your work in the board?
I can honestly say that that happens on a regular basis, but because...
Oh, please pause my time. Yeah, I was at, like, three minutes or something. I'm sorry.
But because of my charge, and also my responsibilities, and just the commitment to achieve what I have been hired to do, I have no choice but to, you know, it has nothing to do with how I might feel about that. It's my responsibility to go forth and report and, you know, be independent and as much as I can. And I have had those instances where I have had to do those types of investigations.
Right. You know, at the end of the day, when you report, and I'm sorry, that was my only question for you.
Okay.
Thank you. At the end of the day, when internal audit reports to the board chair or to the board, I don't even know, you know, seems like the board chair these days, it presents a pressure, no matter who the board chair is, not, this has nothing to do with the current, well, no matter who the board chair is, it's just an unhealthy balance. And so, I support an external inspector general. I know MSD currently does not have the ability to investigate crime, that's, or wrongdoing. That's why in the first investigation with the graduation rates, they said there was nothing to see. And then, months later, you have whistleblowers coming out of the woodwork who had information that showed we were graduating students that didn't meet the requirements, but MSD lacked the capacity to do that. And so, I would seriously hope that we could reconsider, and we should support that bill.
Thank you. I have Ahmed Page, Grady, and you Banks. Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you. I just, I've aired this in our Policy Committee meetings, and I want to air it here as well. I just feel like there's a real conflict of interest, not conflict of interest, a conflict within me when it comes to positions on these bills, because I feel like so many of these bills, the intent of those bills is really well-aligned with our personal values and our mission to serve in the best interest of Prince George's County Public Schools. So, things like class size and cell towers, those bills that are brought forward like that, that have really good intent and are well-aligned with our values and things that we've said on this board that we want to see, to then vote in opposition of that, that's really difficult for me to reconcile within myself. And so, it is, you know, I think this was something I had said last year as well, but it's always been a conflict for me, and so my vote will be according to that.
Thank you. Ms. Page.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions, and the first being in regards to PG 506-18. So, it was expressed in your explanation of opposition that the reason why we're not doing it is because we already do that, correct?
Partly, yes, or primarily, yes. We already report certain information, and then we collect it otherwise.
So, my question becomes, what's the problem?
I think pretty much our position is, why do we need a, why do we need a piece of legislation requiring us to do something that we already do? Or, secondly, that we can provide upon request. Just historically, we have not, we haven't had a practice of supporting bills that were requiring us to do something that we either already have the authority to do, or that we haven't been given an opportunity to do.
But if we already do it, then why can't we just submit what they're asking for?
I submitted, I submitted it in the letter. Yeah, I submitted it to the delegate's office. I'm just, I'm just being honest with you, Ms. Page. The recommendation from the administration isn't to support a law on the books requiring us to do something that we've already had the authority to do, or that we can just provide to someone in response to a request.
But if we're already have, we already have the authority to do it, so why are we not in favor of it? I mean, it's just asking us to submit something we're already doing, so what, why are we spending so much energy on opposing it when we already do it, we can just say we're in favor of it? I'm just not understanding the concept or the rationale behind why we're opposing this bill.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can provide really a different response than I already have. I think we're seeing the same issue from just two different perspectives, and I understand your perspective. If we're already doing it, support it. But our position, as historically, has typically been, if we don't, if legislation isn't required to do this, or if we already have the means to do it within the authority we've already been given, we don't put all of our energy behind supporting bills like that. That has been my experience, but I respect that other people don't share that view.
Okay. My second question is, why are we opposing the Equity and Education Act? PG 505-18, House Bill 214, proposed by Delegate Angel.
Sure. The question about whether or not charter schools should require certain uniforms, that's something that's already, uniforms are already governed by school system policies and procedures, similar to the question you asked about the previous bill. Our recommendation is to oppose because you don't need a law telling you to change your procedures. If this board wants to take up the question of uniforms, you have the authority to do that now. And in fact, in all due respect to our delegates and the constituents that they're responding to, in our time before the Policy Committee, we haven't had a single parent come to us complaining about uniform costs at charter schools, or saying that their kids were denied an opportunity to participate because they couldn't afford it, not one. And so, we're not minimizing what the delegate may have heard, but what we're saying is, we have a process in place already where the board can change these things if that's your will. And so, that was the reason why we didn't get behind supporting the bill.
Okay, so a point of clarification for both of them, because they have the same rationale for why we're opposing it, is this adding any responsibilities onto what we need to submit based off of this?
Yes, yes, so they're both different.
Okay, so we can go one by one. What are the responsibilities that are added?
So, under 505, when we're dealing with the charter school bill, the first just deals with the changing of your procedures or policies about the uniform requirements that charter schools can put in place. Secondly, when you're talking about, the bill also requires a comprehensive plan to be submitted by the schools regarding how they're going to make fees and equipment and supplies affordable, and submitting it to the CEO by a certain time, and then reporting to the delegation back on, back on the, I guess, outcome of those plans, if you will. Our staff currently provides technical assistance to charter schools, both at the pre-opening, during the opening, and then in the interim phases, but that would be a new reporting requirement, new reporting requirement, both for the schools and for the administration and the school system. And then, thirdly, the bill requires a detailed accounting of the types of special education services that we are providing to the students, who has 504 plans, who has IEP plans, et cetera. I have, we have provided this information to the delegate in response to the bill prior, and I have also shared this information again, that we're happily providing it to you upon request. Our position continues to be, though, that we're not, what we're not going to do is at least recommend supporting something that we don't need legislation to do, okay? That's on 505, that's the charter school bill. The Students with Disability Report, similar to what I just explained about that portion of 505, we have, we have this information, we've provided it, okay? We also have information that we're providing to both federal and state education authorities, and we provided this information to our representative as well. Our student transfer office maintains data on which students are, which students have disabilities who are transferring either midterm or at the end of the school year. And then, like I said, we have an ADA compliance office that deals with complaints and things like that. So, I understand, if I can be very frank with you, I understand the intent of the bill as written, but when the delegate presented her bill, the intent that she presented was not what this bill actually requires. What she wants is for the school system to report, she's concerned about, she believes children with disabilities are not receiving adequate services in the school system. This report, all of that data that we're already collecting and reporting, and we can provide upon request, that doesn't deal with the central issue, and if there's a particular student or family that's having an issue, we have a process for dealing with that, but this bill doesn't solve that problem.
Thank you for clarifying. From here on out, I would like to request any reports sent out in regards to these two bills.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Grady.
I just, to administration for the, do we have, did Milestone cancel their contract with us?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have any other contract that's come up, that's wanting to do business with us?
Well, actually, the answer's no. We don't have any pending contract questions about cell towers or anything.
Okay. With this policy that Delegate Washington mentioned as well, so let's say that we don't have contract, and we, you know, the county council, are they able to stop matters in this kind of way as well? Like, are they also, do they get, I'm trying to figure out yours, how all of it works, because it's not just on us.
I see your question.
So, like, we, and, you know, part of my issue here with the cell towers, it was different people here in collaboration with Dr. Maxwell, yes, the community, I know for Green Belt, there was a strong stance at Key, so we had been dealing with this issue for a while and just tracking it. So, I just didn't see the need, but I just think it's interesting because it's nothing that's also including county council, correct? County council has, it's just mainly the school.
This is school board-owned property.
Yeah. I don't think that really even addresses the whole entire issue, because it moves on to other jurisdiction as well.
There are other county agencies that would not be governed by the bill, right?
Okay, that's, thank you for the clarification. I was just also saying, with the uniform, my experience has been I've gotten more, it's just very interesting, the principals are the ones that have the autonomy in their schools to make the decision around the uniforms, or...
Parent influence.
It's the parents. So, but it has to be the majority or that, because I know I've gotten invited into meetings, and I, you know, personally can hear the both sides, but it is the parents, their majority that votes for whether they're going to have a uniform, the colors, I believe in all of that.
What the mandatory process will be, yes. And actually, our procedure is under review right now because we, it needs to be updated. It's several years old. We need to have a policy by which schools can decide to opt out of uniforms. This has been something that's been coming to us a lot, and the AP is not clear on that. And we also need to be, to make sure that we're making it clear that there are not any kind of disciplinary ramifications for students who may not be meeting those. We just want to make sure that we're tightening up the language and the procedures.
And for, okay, so, yeah, and so then for the uniform, that becomes, the school has with the parents. Okay, that clarifies. The other thing, and it's regarding to, I think, some reference that Mr. Burrows mentioned with the internal audit, I'm just wondering if we can look at our own internal practice when these reports come, right? I like more of a checks and balance, so... So let's say there's a report, and I think there's one that you referenced, where a lot of us were sent, but is there a way that the internal audit with, and I think this is something I'm sort of trying to think through, work in collaboration maybe with our executive director for the school, or I don't know, someone else, but I just think it's, sometimes we get a lot of information, and so it'd be great to really kind of flag more so if there's something that is of importance versus if, like, there's a bake sale, you know? It's different. So I just wanted to make that, because I'm interested more, and I put that just because of the comment that was made earlier, just thinking.
Thank you. So I got myself, Williams, Wallace, so if I, just real quick, wanted to echo Ms. Ahmed's sentiments that if things were really working like they could, then our delegates and senators would work much more closely with the board and administration, and to be fair, that the board administration would work more closely with delegates and senators prior to giving, prior to the implementation of many of these bills, so that we can get on the same page beforehand. And I want to acknowledge Mr. Valentine's attempt to do so in the Policy Committee. He's working really hard to do that by inviting folks in to come into policy before sessions, that kind of thing. Hopefully that'll change. The other quick question, or just in terms of clarity, when Mr. Burrows talked about the Inspector General bill and the fact that if it had some substantial changes, he'd want us to support it. Just to be clear, if we oppose it in its current form and then it is changed substantially, it can still come back to the Policy Committee and to us if it is changed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to just make sure, so, you know, we could debate it again if they decide to make changes to the bill.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I think it's very important that we understand our position as a board, and I think legislation that hampers our ability to govern the school system only does us damage. So I just wanted to share that. But with that said, I do, what was our position on the OIG?
The recommended position was to oppose.
Oh, to oppose, okay. And there were two bills referencing how we vote for the chair and co-chair, correct?
Yes. One influencing the, one influencing the appointment of the chair and vice chair and CEO, and then the other influencing the appointment of just the vice chair.
And one of them had some voting rights attached to it, correct?
Yes, so the one that impacts selection of the vice chair, that would change the override vote. So it's vice chair and vote.
And what was our position on that?
That the Policy Committee's recommendation was no position on that one as well, on all three of the governance bills.
There were no positions, okay, thank you.
Mr. Wallace. I was in queue. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Burrows, as always, I thank you for your service in Annapolis. I know it's a slow but fast 90 days, and I miss my time in Nap Town. First, Delegate Barnes, the, I guess, Chair of the Education Delegation Committee now, has sent out a community survey on the board structure, trying to get some feedback from constituents, albeit not, you know, 100% scientific, but I don't, I'm trying to recall, was that information talked about in the Policy Committee? I guess that's the question for Mr. Valentine, that wasn't talked about? It just came out, right?
No, the data from that came out after our meeting, but just a point, the data contradicted itself because the five questions asked, whether power to appoint a chair and vice chair to go to the CEO, another question said, should it go to the board members? And over a majority of people said yes to both questions, which contradicted one another. So I don't think the data is useful, unfortunately, or it could be used, depending on what side of the position you were on.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. I thought the same. I guess my question centered more around statewide bills more than the county bills. I know that's on our docket today, so bear with me if I'm overstepping what we're talking about today. I know last session, there was some conversation that may have been even here about the impact of the paid sick leave possibly impacting school systems and their employees. And with the House and Senate successfully overriding the governor's veto, do you forecast any impact on Prince George County Public Schools?
Yes, yes, we do. We're not sure, and I don't know if John has an updated estimate, but we're not sure of the anticipated dollar amount. Do you know, John?
I don't have an anticipated dollar amount, but I know we're working hard based on the short timeframe to implement this thing from when it was vetoed, to make the impact. But we can get you some additional information on that. But yes, there is definitely an impact on our systems and processes.
Thank you both.
There's an emergency bill that's pending, too, I'm sorry.
An emergency bill?
I actually thought benefits or, yeah, on the sick leave, didn't they tell us $600,000, $700,000?
Yeah, the estimate at the time, and that was early, it was about $600,000.
$600,000?
Per year. Per year.
A year. Okay. And then, I just had some thoughts, because I'm seeing Delegate Washington's bill about the cell towers, and then I got a call from Senator Benson's office. I sent you an email about, they have a task force bill about, to study the impact of student cellphone usage in the classroom. There seems to be some contradiction even among our delegation from the county to Annapolis about, do we want cellphones used, or do we want to keep them off school grounds? Any conversations between the House and the Senate on this contradiction? Do we want more technology? Do we want to boost the signal away from school grounds? Any conversation?
No, no conversation. Keeping it short.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I love my county. And then I saw a press release recently, I think it's from just the Democratic leadership, about the video lottery money loophole, close the loophole, something like that.
Yes.
About the casinos.
Yeah, that's a good one. There's a lot of interest about, people get asked, people ask all the time, what happened to all of the money that was supposed to come into education as a result of the casinos? The short story is that the money comes in and then it goes out via another way. So the way the law is currently written, that casino money is supplanting, not supplementing, education funding. And essentially, there are a few bills that are pending right now that will stop that and allow the Education Trust Fund to grow by, I think the estimate is at least $500 million, which would go in part to what the current commission is pushing for, you know, that additional investment in education. So that's what's pending, to supplement.
And that's separate from what Prince George County Council did, I think that's two years ago, where they said at least 50, 51% of the MGM National Harbor has to.
Yes, that's separate.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, I yield back.
Mr. Valentine?
Call for the question.
Question has been called, thank you. We have one person on the list, that's Mr. Burrows.
I just wanted to concur with my colleague Sonia Williams when she said, legislation that hampers our ability to govern only, I can't even read my own handwriting, only does us damage. And I think that there are some bills here to restore the board's ability to govern, and I would hope that we would support them. But the question's been called, so I don't, you know, we can just vote.
Thank you. The question has been called to support the slate of the board's position on local bills as recommended by the Policy Committee. And let me try saying, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no.
Abstain.
Okay, well, it looks like we're going to have to call a roll. I just figured, why not give it a shot? Call a roll, please.
Ms. Ahmed?
Abstain.
Ms. Boston? Mr. Burrows?
No.
Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Page?
Abstain.
Ms. Grady?
Abstain.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Wiseman? Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, two, three abstentions.
Colleagues, and if I have my math and my law correct, we need eight votes. Is that correct? Right. So unless someone wants to change their vote, then this, then this does not, this vote did not pass. Certainly, we could open up other votes, I would venture to guess.
I'll vote aye.
Okay, Ms. Grady has changed her vote to aye. Does that, I assume that gives us the eight votes? Okay, thank you. Then that motion does carry. And so where are we are, geez, we still, now we get to go to governance, second readers. And yeah, we're like halfway through the agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry for the interruption. PG 512, the CIP bill, that was not a PLLC recommendation. That was an administration recommendation.
So you, do you, oh my goodness, so that was the, so the administration recommendation was?
Support with amendment.
To support with amendments. Would anyone like to make a motion to support that? It's been moved and seconded. I'll be first on the list to say I would support it without amendments, but I will go with the will of the board. Is there any additional debate about this? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, do I need to, all right, we're so close now to the number, let's go ahead and call a roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Mr. Burrows? Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Page?
Aye.
Ms. Grady?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Wiseman? Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Nine.
Curtis, you want to vote?
Nine ayes, one nay.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, that motion carries. Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
Okay. You might as well stay up, aren't you doing the legislative agenda?
I am.
All right, you need to take, grab a chair or something? Feel free to sit up front if you want to.
I promise, I'm not trying to stay long. No, and in fact, I mean, the legislative report, the 2018 legislative platform is before you.
Actually, you don't need to stay, Lexi, don't say anything else. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of second readers, items 9.1 and 9.2 under governance, second readers.
I think you just did, sir, but.
Just go, because we might not have to write, this might be simpler. All right, and I now will entertain a motion to approve items 9.1 and 9.2 under second reader. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
That's the legislative agenda?
This is both items under.
So under two, you have two options for the school calendar.
Oh, we got to choose one today?
You have to choose one, so you might want to just break them apart, approve the legislative platform.
How about I break them up? I'll take the motion first for the legislative agenda. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is yours for the legislative agenda or the calendar, Ms. Ahmed? Okay. Okay. Seeing no discussion, I will put the vote before you to approve the 2018 legislative agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. See, I'm glad I kept you, glad I told you to sit down, saved you some trouble, there you go.
I'm abstaining.
One abstention. Now, you want to give us, everyone pull up your calendars with your choices.
So Christian is going to run you through version one and version two.
Sure. Good evening, board members. So in front of you, there's two versions of the calendar. Version one and version two both comply with Governor Hogan's requirement to start.
They both comply?
They both comply. They both comply with the governor's requirement to start after Labor Day and to end by June 15. They also comply with the 192 workdays for instructional staff. However, version one does not include a Jewish holiday or a non-student day for professional development on October 19. That has historically been MSEA Day, which is the day in which many of our teachers and others in the association go to Ocean City. And it keeps intact spring break. Version two does include Yom Kippur, and it does include the Professional Development Day on October 19. However, it shortens spring break by two days, April 15 and 16. If you remember, prior to, when this first came up as first reader, the board requested information related to a community survey. We did a survey, and I'm not sure, Executive Director Barry Wilson, I think I said it right, if you shared that, that information was shared with the board. Ultimately, the community overwhelmingly supported version one, which did not impact spring break, spring break. But it did impact the Jewish holiday and the Professional Development Day on October 19. So in front of you, and ultimately, it's the board's decision, you'd have to choose one of the calendars in order for us to move forward.
Thank you.
Do we know how many respondents?
We can't choose version three to keep it all and violate the governor's protest.
Well.
Never mind, never mind, I digress, it's getting late.
Do we know how many respondents there were to the survey I was asked?
900, and they overwhelmingly, they overwhelmingly supported not.
And it is important, yeah, it's important to note.
Because they supported spring break.
They wanted spring break. It's also important to note that a large number of respondents were employees, and they also identified that they did not want to touch spring break.
One chance, okay, so I got Mr. Wallace and Ms. Page.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question to Mr. Rhodes. In the survey, trying to look at the data, was there a question, because I get this a lot in my district, about a second parent-teacher conference in the second semester?
The survey did not include, did not include that question.
Okay. Any administrative thought on having one? You know, I get parents saying, well, I got that Veterans Day, but then.
The challenge in, and this, we've talked about this publicly, the challenge with the governor's requirement is that it's short, it constricts us and it limits flexibility for us to do a number of well-worked, well, great ideas, but it's limited based off of the calendar. Also important is that when we have weather, inclement weather days like we've had, and for us, it's been relatively earlier in the season. Normally, February has historically been the month in which we've been hit pretty heavy with weather. Dr. Watts was just showing me a weather forecast for tomorrow, a possibility of freezing rain. So when you have those things like we've had, it limits our ability, and ultimately, we don't have options that we think are often great for families and community.
Thank you, thank you. I yield back.
Ms. Page?
The survey that you all conducted, you said that it was mostly employees and other people to respond, not mostly students. I can tell you that I did a poll of the students, and they overwhelmingly said that version one is the preferred version, primarily because they do not want their spring break touched, because it's so much work that they do, especially for AP and IB students throughout the school year, that that one-week break is really refreshing rather than a one-day break.
Would you please share that data with us? I'm already hearing that.
Yes, I can try, it's on Twitter.
But isn't this, is that it right there?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, well, this is how my generation communicates, so.
So tell us about this thing called Twitter.
All right. Oh, okay, I thought the joke was a little bit serious, I was mentally prepared to respond to that.
Okay, I'll get it, all right. I got myself and Ahmed, thank you for that information. First, on version, version one eliminates Yom Kippur, and it eliminates the Professional Development Day, which is MSEA Day, which I know we've done for many, many years. Have our union colleagues weighed in about that.
So, yeah, so we, we actually host a calendar committee in which we have a number of internal and external partners sit on that committee. All the unions, let me be very clear, all the unions are invited, PGCEA has always participated. This year, as we do every year, we put the options on the table, they were able to, if you remember, this year, we actually did not allow, well, employees who were going to Ocean City or going to some professional development, MSEA Day, were permitted association leave or professional leave to attend. However, on October, whatever day was this year, we actually had school, it was a workday. We asked PGCEA to provide any anecdotal or hard evidence of overwhelming number of teachers and others participating, and as, as we anticipated, there wasn't a large number of participants, when I say large, out of our 10,000 teachers, a hundred or so that ultimately participated. Many of those are the delegates that MSEA pays for, MSEA and PGCEA pays for. They've noted their concern about what that could do for limiting the number of participants that do participate, but unfortunately, again, the governor's mandate doesn't really allow for a lot of options. It's fair to say, and I think I might have to do the background on this, Montgomery County actually has done the same thing as it relates to MSEA Day. They've, they've limited only to those who are participating, and they allow for professional leave or some other type of association leave. So, this has been a trend in our state for a while. Prince George County Public Schools is one of the few districts that were still holding on strong to that day.
Sounds good, thank you, that is very helpful. I'll note then that we don't have yet a motion on the table for one of these, so feel free, anyone, to provide one, and the next speaker is Ms. Ahmed.
Yes, I just wanted to make a, a comment. I had noticed when this first came on the agenda back for the January meeting, I had gone through some of the proper, proper channels to request the data results for the survey, knowing that there were going to be two options on the table, and I just request that in the future, when we have this type of situation, there's data available, there are two options available, please provide that to us, so that we can make an informed decision in a formal way. My understanding was that we would get some aggregated data from the survey, and I'm glad that we have the understanding of what the survey results are, but please, like, if there are systems in place, if there is data available, share that with us, because it's important, that, that information is important for us to make a decision, and, an informed decision nonetheless. Yeah, that's it.
I'm, I think I understand your concern, and I would say, we will, we shared all the data. However, as you may or may not know, the majority of the data that you have, I think you have the aggregate data, the, this aggregate data primarily is written comment, which would, it's 900-plus people's individual comments, and it was difficult for us to compile that in a way that would make sense for everyone, so.
But we did get, you did send us the-
Yeah.
The survey data, right?
Yeah, I did, but I, I think I understand the, I think I understand your concern.
Yeah, I will say, that happened after me asking numerous times, behind the scenes for a month, so, please, thank you.
No, no problem.
Mr. Wallace?
I'd like to make a motion to, on nine point zero two, to move forward favorably with version one of the calendar.
It's been moved and seconded for version one, is there any, go, go ahead.
Yeah, just a follow-up request, I'm not gonna make a motion, probably don't have the support for it, just want to get some figures on what the fiscal impact would be of having second parent-teacher conference day in the, in the second semester, perhaps on President's Day, just to get a fiscal impact of what that'll be. Thank you.
So, we can look, I do think it's also, I mean, may work with employee labor relations, because-
The federal holiday?
There may be a, there may be a contractual component as well to that, there's only one that's in the contract.
Thank you, is there any, I see no further discussion, so I will put the vote before you to accept version one of the calendar on second reader nine point two. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Follow-up items, follow-up items from the December 19, 2017 special board meeting are posted in board docs. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on Thursday, February 1, 2018? May I have a second, Ms. Boston? Thank you. All right. It has been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education hereby approves actions taken in executive session on February 1, 2018 as follows: labor negotiations, legal matters, personnel matters, student appeals, and administrative matters. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to adjourn? It has been moved and seconded to adjourn, seeing no further debate. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.